Allah And it is not official, they are still I do not know if you can see it yet, but five years My aunt Babo She has a woman, she has five years What is it then, she born? China, five years Five years That is her mom, she has a daughter, she has a son, she has a nephew, five years Who does not know, five years What is it, we will learn, we will manifest, what is it, we will do now Tell us now, we are not seeing it See it, the district The Nigessa Amanda, the province The province, the truly province in the Tulele National Is our Nigessa, the district in the Tulele district The government, and from the national, from the root, at least, we will kill it Kill it, I am not babo, I am not official, I am not five years I am not scolded
We are going to go to the head portfolio committee We are going to say, we are going to go along with the parliament Of course, of course Our councillors No one came to the government, was there Who helped, who helped the district Now, we are going to tell them, we are going to be nice I am a provincial office for NHI He is not Dr. Majjo Who is a public health specialist
NHI, you are not NHI Okay, NHI is not
Okay It is from where NHI, that means It is from where the office is For National Health Insurance We are going to try, now, we are going to try It is very big, you are You are small, you are passing the parliament Now, we are going to try, also, to get the government To go on, we are going to come to To Semzans Africa Okay He is not going to the national, the national, he is not senior advisor, advocate, he is not going to Mr. Maubelo So, I am going to talk Then
I am going to go to the ballon table Apple, we are going to go to the corner, we are going to go to the corner Now, it is true, anything is there We are going to go to the corner, we are going to go to the corner Where is it, now, my class, 43 Hello, my class, we are going to go to the table, we are going to go to the table We are going to go to the table, we are going to go to the table Here, the table, the table, it is here, I am going to go to the table I am going to go to the table Here, I am going to go to the table Your school, there is a book, it is about There is a book, it is about I am not going to the table, I am not going to the table Then, we will learn
Very good, hello It is pending, it is pending, senior legal advisor, Mr. Justice, I am a national office The
But she is not born No, but I am not going to go, but, but, I am not going to go
And you are not saying, she is not going to Advocate to a true law, Mr. My
I am not seeing it, I am not wearing pants
Oh A pair, then, I mean, I advocate to a true, Mr. Maubelo Then, even, Miss Ndombi Nikki Nikki, sorry Now, I am going to advocate, a national office Even Mr. Justice Now, I am going to advocate, a national office, we are going to be legal advisor with It is pending, it is pending, Dr. Majjo You are not saying, I am a public health specialist, Yena Now, I am going to go to the provincial office Very good, hello
I am born, I am not wearing pants But I am not wearing pants, but I am not wearing pants But I am not wearing pants I am not born now And so Very good This is a start, this is a good district, I don't want us to spend more time Can we be fast?
Yeah, I am going to go to the hall Now, along with the parliament, I am going to go to the hall The corner, the corner, the normal, I am going to go to the corner, the council I am going to pass the question Here, I am going to go to the meeting, I am going to go to the meeting I am going to say, we are going to go to the pillow, we are going to the streets He is not going to go to the hall Um
I am not going to the clinic, I am not going to the clinic But I am not going to the clinic I am not going to the district I am not going to the clinic I am not going to the shop
Yeah, who Let me pass the question, the district director, I am not going to the center Eh, 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 eh Get, 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 get Get the table, I am not going to the pillow, I am not going to the He is not going to go to the hall, but I am going to Eh, the government, our facilities, the government, I am going to the pillow, eh, the corner We, we are districts, so, I am not going to go to the I am not going to go to the I am not going to go to the So, I am not going to go to the I am going to go to the I am not going to go to the Eh, I am not going to In a special, like, especially, JJ Crooks Eh, I am not going to the corner, I am not going to the CEO, Mrs. K, I am not going to the She is Yeah, I am going to talk Okay, best in Tulela, I am so I am so, I am going to go to the Eh, I am so, I am going to go to the Eh, I am here, I am so But, 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 CEO, where, where From the other side, but I see, I see, I am not going to the The But, 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 but No, but, I am not going to the I am not going to the I see, I see The
I am not going to the I am not going to the Very good, I am not going to go If you are not going to hear, I am going to go You, you are going to hear, you are going to hear I am going to go to the I am going to go to the Now, it is here, I am not going to the I am not going to the I am not going to the And this is what I am going to That community health center, so, I am not going to So, 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 sorry So I am not going to If you are not going to hear, I am not going to In the hall, no, no Then, cool
Okay, I am going to Tulela, eh, I am going to hear Eh, so, I am going to Manchester Hospital, eh, 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 eh You are not a patient, you are not a patient But I am going to talk, I am going to Now, I am not going to the Especially, as a Manchester And in the, the The country, the corner, oh, oh, Mr. Manion
Oh, you are not bad Yeah, I am not going to the 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 I am not going to
Okay, best, I am going to go to the Here, I am not going to the Eh, 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 eh I am not going to the I am not going to the I am not going to go to the But I am not going to the Oh, my, oh, oh, only, oh, the The I am not going to the I am not going to the I am not going to the The I am not going to the I am not going to the I am not going to the Yeah Very good
Empower, I am not going to go to the But, but I am not going to I am not going to go to the I am not going to go to the I am not going to go to the And go to the And go to the I am not going to go to the Ah, ah, ah I am not going to the I am not going to the Ah, I am not going to the She is Do, eh, do, for the She is young She is going to the She is going to the She is going to the And the The And the I am not going to the And my I am not going to the I am not going to the The I am not going to the Anybody, I am not going to the
About Tina, eh Ico I am going to go to the I am not going to the Eh, I am not going to the Now, oh, 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 I am not going to the I am not going to the But I am not going to the But I am not going to the Eh, I am not going to I am not going to San Andrews Hospital
I am born, I am not going to the Yes, yes, women empowerment, very good I am not going to
Okay, I am going to go to the district office, I am going to go to the district office, I am going to go to the
I am not going to go to the I am not going to go to I am not going to Ico It is true, I am not going to go to the I am not going to go to the I am not going to the So, I am not going to the I am not going to the I am not going to the It is now So, I am not going to go to the I am not going to the Let it go Let it go, God, it is good, it is good Now, I am not going to I am not going to I am not going to go to Very good, I am not going to the
Very good I am going to go to the I am going to go to the Post-ops in regional hospital I am going to go to the Post-ops in Regional Eh, 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 post-ops in
I am not going to go to the I am not going to go to the I am not going to the I am not going to go to
Very good, I am not going to the Yeah, good
I am not going to I am not going to the I am not seeing it The government, I am not going to 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 the Regional hospital I am not going to the I am not going to the I am not going to the Out of France, CEO, the
I am going to talk, CEO, eh, eh I am going to talk, I am going to talk About, about, we are not going to
I am not going to the Politic, it is not I am not going to the Members Do you want to go to the Oh, yes, I am going to go to the I am not going 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 to I am not going to go to the I am going to go to the I am going to go to the I am going to go to the Like, social cluster, I am going to go to the I am not going to the I am not going to the I am not going to the Agriculture I am not going to I am not going to I am not going to Sports, arts and culture I am not going to Human segment Human segment That's all, members, I am not going to Social cluster, I am not going to I am not going to go to The government Who is not going to I am not going to go to the I am not going to go to the I am not going to go to the I am not going to go to I am not going to go to I am not going to go to My good, you are It is human, now I am not going to go to the So, I am going to do now So, I am going to do now I am not going to the I am not going to the I am not going to the History, I am not going to I am not going to I am not going to Speaker, which is I am not going to the I am not going to the I am not going to the History, I am not going to I am not going to go to the I am not going to the I am not going to the I am not going to the God, I am not going to the 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 Very good, I am not going to the I am not going to I am not going to the 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 The Constitution, as a South Africa 1727, the corner So, I am going to One, one, six, two, one, one, six My sister, my mother, I am not going to the 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 For the And it is not alone I am not going to the I am not going to Oh, again, I am going to 1727 Oh, 1727, yeah, now In the Eh, eh, eh I am not going to Was a South Africa In that, I am not going to 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 We analyze, it is just But, Leo Who is Hey Who is I am not going to the I am not going to the Sing, I am not going to Is in the I am not going to the I am not going to the We are again, again, I am not going to 1727 I am not going to the I am not going to the Oh, it is true, eh It is long, eh, eh Logopila In the Eh, eh, eh I am not going to I am not going to I am not going to Esquamenisako Unamalini Oh, oh, eh I am not going to Sisi, more Esafige, la gusso We are not going to I am not going to I am not going to I am not going to What is it, more I am not going to I am not going to Sioku, I am not going to From 1994 We April, I am not going to I am not going to I am not going to Ex-Boy When you are not going to I am not going to I am not going to Yes, in the I am not going to I am not going to 1727 She is always, she is She is She is In the Eh, eh, eh I am not going to She is not going to the Long, she is not going to She is not going to She is not going to She is Oh, this is I am not going to National Health Insurance I am not going to 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 Eh, eh, eh In the I am not going to I am not going to She is I am not going to She is not Poverty She is not In, in, in In, in, in Equality Inequality She is not unemployment I am not going to I am not going to Ever, not going to I am not going to She is She is She is She is in the My I am not going to She is not going to I am not going to In the I am not going to So, I am not going to 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 She is not going to I am 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 not going to He is not going to I am not going to She is not medical age And it was I am not going to He is not normal He is not I am not going to He is not I am not going to As in, I am not medical age I am not going to 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 If you are Eh, eh, eh I am not going to If you are I am not going to She is I am not going to Song, it is I am not going to Oh, my, I am not going to 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 Eh, eh, eh I am not going to 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 She is not going to I am not going to She is She is not going to I am not going to She is not going to She is not going to So, I am not going to So, I am not going to 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 God, I am not going to I am not going to Miss I am not going to 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 Legal advisor with They, they, they They are not going to They are not going to I am 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 not going to God, I am not going to 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 I close I am not going to 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 Specialist So, I am not going to 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 And it is not going to I am not going to I am not going to Next, I am not going to I am not going to I am not going to My clinic Not going to the I am not going to And it is going to More infrastructure More infrastructure More infrastructure I am not going to I am not going to Police Yeah But I am not going to 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 When you are not going to I am 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 not going to Apple I am not going to I am not going to It is It is I am not going to Public hearings I am not going to 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 Five, September Again, I am not going to 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 She is not going to She is not going to I am 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 not going to She is I am not going to 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 I am not going to[1114.03]
Gungu, uko, goba mote. So, yeah, as I was saying, for those that are in our social media, I'll be taking you through the bill in English and my colleague, Mr. Mangale, will be translating in Isizulu. Eh, as you can see that the bill has got a preamble. It's giving us a story as to why are we having this bill? The bill is the National Health Insurance Bill, which is bill number fifteen B, B fifteen B of twenty twenty. Um, it's got a long, a long title, the part that is in, eh, in bold, and then it's got a preamble. So the preamble is basically recognizing our socio-economic injustices, the imbalances and equities of the past. It also seeks to heal the divisions of the past to establish a society based on democratic values and also recognizes that there's a need to improve quality of life for all citizens eh, and make sure that they are free, it frees the potential of each person. So bearing in mind that in terms of Article twelve of the United Nations Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights of nineteen sixty-six, the article provides for the right of everyone to enjoyment of the highest attainable standard of physical and mental health. And also in terms of our African of physical and mental health. And it also requires eh, the state parties to take necessary measures to protect the health of their people and to ensure that they receive medical attention when they are sick. And also, as the chairperson did indicate, that we have Section twenty-seven of our Constitution of nineteen ninety-six, which provides that everyone has a right to have access to healthcare services and that includes your reproductive healthcare for, for the women. And also eh, in Section nine and ten of the Constitution, there is eh, a recognition of rights to equality, that is Section nine, as well as Section ten, that, that eh, recognizes the right to human dignity that all of us have. So eh, the Constitution and the UN eh, covenant as well as the Charter.
Yako lisaa, uku mopula ulwemi. Eh, njenga ngongo, umamguni. God was a bonna uku ti, sisaku bekanu, uku ti siyavuma, uku nezelek, gogolshlobo. I do agree to what we are doing. As we have said, we are here, tina singlo mparati, ozi leo ab. But we have got millions of people who are attending in different languages. God wa kenjenga ngoku, sitela uku ti. Ika lue ngoko thula, ngokoti abantu esinabo ngabapi na, omakeba. Then ange ne, umguni, sele engena, gesilu ungu. Godwa umtu olapaparati, ekwazi le indokta ifumane, lendonge sizo. Ngakesina weyoku ti, ufumasi ndokuti, guzo kujo angesi ngesi. Babe abantu benga kaya, zukutu kensekandona, abanyi bapume, babe ba. Sele ibui selua, umakeba, abantu, abebesele bezile, kona apa, abeku. Ukuba, gogomtecho, zo tala njango, ngogomtecho. Swa petama legal advisers, yole eyetu from province, nanga ya asuka from national, sitela indokta uku ti. Kune mangali, ngesizo. Ange ne, umama, u, 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 umguni, ngesinngesi, mvagogo, kwenzele indokuti. Abantu, uni zilwa, abantu, ngoba si bizile, indokta ma guzo shanga, nokona apa. Abanyi keban gene, ngobu kakaka, engke ketina si kwaasunge, ngoba si kwaaswa, sisabenzisa, oti lilias nas. Godwa gengo, ucho nipha, abasele befikili, bakalebanige, elolo, leso, leso, leso. Undokta ange ne, ubabu mangali, ngesizo, ange ne, umama, u, umguni, ngesinngesi. Atela ganja. Itela geno, ukuwe lulewa, ngogomtecho. Ogueto sebe bill, and ifunela ngakotwa, ifuna indokuti jangan go, si lu, si singe ne, piyo ganja. Belan nishanga, asien sekanja. It's fine. It's fine. Thank you.
Ngibonge. Eh, ngizowenza kobili. Gizoi kaza, ngesinngesi? Ebese ngie, enza futi, ngitoli, ngesizo. Eh, ukala ge ngesizulu, slalo. Lomtecho swivinywa, espamwa. Njongo bengi kaza, ngesinngesi, uku ti. La kunese thulo, uku ti kunani, sila, lomtecho utingera ngani. Kuya bona galage, uku ti, ekatini zaktala. Kwa obane, ngenga, uku ti, aslingani. Eh, askuwa zifutu, uku ti, sibe ne, ne, mbilo, engono, sibe sonke, kuwa sebona kalu, uku tawenza, kelo mtecho. Jawa besen xiloke, uku ti, si umzansi Africa, natisi member, kwa, kwa United Nations, sahala, uku ti, sia saina, lo, lo, lolulule, lolo, wango nineteen sixty-six, uku ti. Siti wongu mundo, agabe ne, nelungele, uku ti, akwaz, uku ti, atogo zele, imbilo, engono. Ngoweze mbilo, kanya, ne, mbilo, ngowe ngondo, i, 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 mental health. No, uku ti eh, natisi Africa sine Charter, yamalungele abantu. Ebese uku tige, o Article sixteen na, yewiyashu, uku ti, fanalesu kwaaz, uku ti, sibe ne, kuwa, si, si kwaaz, wongu mundo la Africa akwaz, uku ti, atole, imbi. Engege. Ebese ngie, yaku, i Constitution, omtecho segelo, lo, os saupasi, san, iskaba, seschaka lolunye, uku, Section nine, utisonke, sina malungele, uku ti, silingani, i right to equality. Ebese uku ti, i, 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 iskaba, se shumi, o Section ten, utige, fanalesu kwaaz, uku ti, sibe ne, hu, human dignity. Ogu, uku tige, sina, so, uku ti, sina eshunzi, sia abantu, bongela, imzansi Africa. Ebese sia, umt, gugu iskaba, samashumamabilines kombis, o Section twenty-seven. Lo, os nigasage, ilungele, uku ti, sibe ne, no, uku ti, si kwaaz, uku ti, si pil, si thole, tiso, leze mbilo, ama healthcare services. No, uku ti, ma, be, njego basaba, nbesfazani, si kwaaz, uku ti, swatole, lo, malungelele. Sizole, sia okulumage, ngama lungelo, esngani, uku ti, ingane, zonke, skona. Eh, yes, yes, yeswe, la se South Africa, nabu, banelungele, uku ti, bakwaz, uku ti, batole, usizo, leze mbilo. Eh, in English, I didn't mention Section twenty-eight, wherein we're saying the Constitution provides that every child has a right to basic healthcare services, irrespective of whether they are from illegal immigrants or not. Then, senzo yakuyona, ngo, i bill, ngoba i billi, lomtecho swivinywa, wenzelukuti, sizo, kulumanke, universal healthcare coverage, uku ti, wongu mundo, agawa azu, uku ti, atole, uku, uku siza gala, ngoweze mbilo. Gizoyake, okala, i purpose, nama, isizatu, uku ti, why si, si, si ze, na lomtecho swivinywa. Eh, i billige, i gala, nama isungula, i NHI fund, uku ti, guzo ba iskwama, esii, esii organ of state, nama, si, si ulhelo, le, ngambani, yahulmeni, ezobe, i, ipaliwe, gowe, PFMA, omtecho lo, opega, uksabenzisa, nama, i kwama, zuksebenzisa, kwama, semali, kahulmen. Eh, i billige futi eh, ipege, uku tige, ishu, uku ti, le NHI, nama, lomshwalense, ima apa, ama functions, ama powers, nama duties, aho. So we seek to establish the National Health Insurance Fund, eh, its functions, the powers and duties, and also eh, provide for the control of, of the fund by the board, the composition of board, the appointment of members of board, the appointment of chairperson and vice-chairperson of board, the meetings of board, the appointment of committees of, of the board and disqualification from membership of board, as well as vacation of office. So, lomtecho ge, siti, uzoba ne body, le fund, le, le, siskwama, le, si sema, si, so, sumshwalense, sizo ba, si kontrola, nama, sizo bespetwe, i body. Sizo kulumage, ngoku tige, i body, obana, bazu kwaaz, uku ti, babe, amalungwa aho. Azokhetwa ganja ni, ogu, i appointment ya o, no, uku tu slalo, no, segela slalo, bazo khetwa ganja ni, kube, im, xanga, no, ya o, i body. Ebese kuba uku tige eh, labo, abazu, mbe, oki, uku ti, ban gene, kule body. Mangabe, izi, pisi, do, apesobe, besenzile, uku ti, ba disqualify, nama, bangamomgele, uku ti, ba kubegbe, babe, se body ni. No, uku tige, umundo, umaganja, niskunzi. Eh, i bill also seeks to define beneficiaries of services covered by the NHI fund and that also includes the population registration. Eh, it also provides for the contracting of accredited providers of personal healthcare services and allows for the minister to determine criteria for accreditation and reinvestment of healthcare providers. So, lomtecho swivinywa, upinde opegale, luku tige, obana, abantu, bazu kwaaz, uku ti, ba, xomule. Gugu ti, batole, i, i, inziza, ngale, kule fundle. No, uku tige, wongu mundo ge, ozobe, e, 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 egoshi weapons, uku ti, u, 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 u isakamozi, uzo kwaaz, xomula. Upinde futi, icho, uku ti, labo, abazu, bebe ama, service providers, o, dogoteela, ne, i beldela. Sizo kwaaz, kuwa ne, uku ti, zibalise na, zuku ti, zishu, uku ti, iso, na, eziletha, usizo, leze mbilo. No, uku tige, u, ngongo she, weze mbilo, uyena ge, ozo shu, uku ti, abantu, ba, 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 creditwa ganja, nama, banigezo, ganja ni, kunya. No, uku ti, ba, babe, abantu, abanigeza, i inziza, ngesimbilo. No, uku tige, bazo kokelwa ganja ni, es, abantu, abaletha, i inziza, zezimbi. The bill will also provide for the minister to determine healthcare benefits that will be reimbursed through the NHI fund as well as the service coverage and cost measurement provisions. Njego besen kazi le, uku tige, wongu mundo ge, ama benefits, nama, i, i, u, u, xomula. U, ngongo she, uyona, uzobe shu, uku ti, laba, basomula, bazo, bazo, bebe, xomula, ganja ni, no, uku tige, laba, bazo, bebe, benza, lo, umsabenzisa, bazo kokelwa, ngenje lenja. Gizobesen kaza ge, i billi eh, ngama chapters eh, la, skulumanke, na ngayi layout of chapters. Chapter one talks to the definitions, the purpose and application of the act. Chapter two talks to the access to healthcare services. Chapter three talks to the NHI fund. Chapter four deals with the board of fund. Chapter five deals with the CEO. Chapter six eh, talks to the committees that are going to be established by this bill. Seven talks to the advisory committees. The, eh, chapter eight eh, provides for the general provisions that are applicable to operation of fund. Chapter nine provides for complaints and appeals. Chapter ten provides for financial matters. Then, chapter eleven talks to miscellaneous provisions. So ge, isa shugo, eso beskuluman ngazo, lugu si, kubiza ngama chapters, kula omtecho swivinywa. Isa shugos, ah, la, siso beskuluma, ngikukazwa, kwama gama. Ebese kuchlo, uku tige, ini injongo, yalo mtecho, no, uku ti, uzosebenza, ganja ni, kupigoba ni. Eh, isa shugos, es billi, siku luma ge, ngoku ti eh, umundo kwaaz, ganja, noktola, inziza, zo, 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 kwaze mbilo. Isa shugos, es status, kuluma ngaolo, umshwalense. Isa shugos, esine, siku luma, nghe body. Isa shugos, es thupa, siku luma ngama committee, agu, uwana, azo, anja, ilo mtecho swivinywa. Esas kombis, as kuluma, ngama advisor committees, zukwa ama committee, alule gayo, a kwama. Es, es, seschaka lumbili, chapter eight, siku luma ge, ngoku tige, i, 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 i gaba, ezikuizona, ezobe, zisabenza, kule, siskwama. Isa shugos, eschaka lolunye, chapter nine, siku luma ge, ngoku ti, i kalo. Norma, umundumefunu, glulisa, iskalo, wenzaga, njaani, uku ti, ashu, uku ti, agato gozile, no, uku ti eh, aapile, gesngomo, statwe, i body. Eh, eseshumi, siku luma ge, uku ti, izmali, sizo kamgapi, uku ti, le, siskwama, zukwa zuksebenza. Ebese uku ti, ishumna ni, o chapter eleven. Ilage, siku luma ngai gaba ge, ekubile, uku tige, lomtecho swivinywa, upetene. Ebese uku tige, kune, shedule, gneni, la, ekulumanke, na ngayo, yonge, imtecho. Ezobe, iktrichie liwe, lugu si, kubiza ngai amendment. Ebese kuba, nalio mtecho, mtecho, ezokritwa, ilo mtecho lo, obase, uwana, uzosebenza. Loku ge, esikiza, ngoku tige, ya repilwa by this bill. Eh, angshule ge, ngale, ku, chapter one, njego be, benkazi, uku ti, isa shugos, gala, we are talking about ama definitions. Siku luma ngai purpose, as well as the application of the act. Wonge la makama, so, bona, kui, 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 mtecho swivinywa, o page five. We've got all the words that are defined in terms of this bill. Eh, those words are in bold and eh, the, the definition thereof is actually explaining how the words are used in the body of the bill. So, inasmuch as i gama, mangabiltkazi, we ngesinngesi. Ngegalfane, na ngenjelela, elto likwen gayo, kula mtecho. So, sia kaza ge, uku ti, i gama ne, gamali shuktini, kula mtecho. So, ibona ge, from page five to page seven. And then, sia, kui, purpose of the act, ogu, ingegi ti, uku ti, ucho seni, lomtecho. Lomtecho ge, seeks to establish and maintain a National Health Insurance Fund in the Republic that is going to be funded through mandatory prepayment that aims to achieve sustainable and affordable universal access to quality healthcare services. And then, the fund will be a single purchaser and single payer of healthcare services and it will be eh, through eh, the pooling of funds and strategic purchasing of healthcare services as well as goods eh, from accredited contracted eh, healthcare service providers. So ge, njego be, ngishu, uku ti, ingegi ti, alomtecho lo. Eh, sisa, ma, uku ti, sikame, in National Health Insurance Fund, iskama, so, so, skazwe, longe, sumshwalense. Ogu uwana, uku ti, wongu mundo, ozobe, sezwe, ne, ozobe, ekwaz, uku ti, atole, usizo ngalo, ngoweze mbilo. No, uku tige eh, akwaz, uku ta kokel, uku ti, labo, abantu, ba kokelege eh, ngapambi, no, uku ti, wongu mundo funusizo, akwaz, uku ta atole, da, zo be kokeliwe. Eh, le, siskwama ge, isone, sizo ba, skuaz, uku ti, sitenge, zonke, i inziza. Norma, injela, yuktola, usizo, leze mbilo. Ilona futi, isona futi, esobe, kuisona, esobe, skokela. Yonge, injela, yu, uku ti, umunda, asiza gala, ngoweze mbilo. Loku ge, guzo wenzeka, uku ti, zonke, izmali, ezobe, zi, zi fa, uku ti, le, siskwama. Zikwaz, uku ti, zitenge, ama, ama services, na, ne, ne, inziza, zuku ti, umunda, kwaaz, uku ti, as, a, atole, usizo, leze mbilo. And then, at clause three, we'll find it on page eight. It talks to the application of the act. Eh, this act applies to all health establishments and this will excl- exclude the military, military healthcare, eh, health services as well as the secret services. And the act will not affect the funding and functions of any organs of state in respect of healthcare services until relevant legislation has been enacted or amended. And where there is conflict with other legislation, this act will prevail except for the application of the Constitution and the PFMA. So ge, lomtecho lo, uzobe, uzabenza, guzo zonke, i, i beldela, eh, amase chari. Nazo zonke, indao, la, kuniga, zwa, kona, usizo, leze mbilo, lokoge ge, agu, laba, abazu, bebesema, so sheni, badu, zobe, bene, xelo, labo, uku ilona, ulbaka, ta, ngoweze mbilo. Na labo eh, abasu, xelo, ne, liwe, intholi, secret services, uku ti, nabu. Bazobi, bene, xelo, lo, abo, ulbapege, lela, ngoweze mbilo, goda, wongu nyumondo. Zonke, indao, bazobe ge, be petwe, ilolu, le, siskwama, le, sese mbilo. Eh, upinde, shuke, omtecho, uku ti, mangabe, uko na, enye, omunyumtecho, osha isana, nawolo, ogunne, conflicting, ayo. Eh, uwana, lomtecho, uwana, ozoba, hambili, uwana, uwana, zobe, zisabenza. Eh, ngapandle ge, mangabu, uku ti, lomtecho, osha isana, lomtecho segelo. Norma, i Public Finance Management Act, uku mtecho ge, we kwaas, zuksebenza eh, u, u, uze mali, kuholmen. Then I'll go to clause four, that deals with the population coverage, you'll find that on page eight of the bill. Eh, the clause provides that the fund will purchase services on behalf of the South African citizens, the permanent residents, the refugees, the inmates and specific categories of foreign nationals. Eh, the asylum seekers and illegal foreigners will only be provided eh, with emergency medical services, eh, the notifiable conditions as well as basic healthcare services. And then eh, as for the children, as I did mention in Section twenty-eight of the Constitution, all children will be getting medical healthcare services. And then, for the visiting foreign nationals eh, those will be covered by the travel insurance. Lanage, sia shu, uku ti, njengo, ti, zonke, skona, la, ezwe, nila, se, mningisim Africa, obana, bazo, bebe, kavoe, ilomshwalense. Eh, lomshwalense ge, ukava, bonge, abantu, abba, aba, xali, balaa, eh, South Africa. Aba, no, buzwe, la, eh, South Africa. Ebese kuba, nalabo, abashala, permanently, ababantu, ba, bangapandle, goda, abashala, permanently, nabu, bazo kavoa. Ebese kuba, ama refugees, laba, esba, kubiza, njenga, abafutuki, nama, babaleki. Emazwe, nabakamga uwana, bazo kavoa, kube, isboshwa. Ebese kube ge, nalabo, abapuma ngapandle, bazo kwaaz, uku ti, ba kavoe, lomtecho. Eh, labo, abama asylum seekers, nama, abapatile, ezwe ni. Na labo, abba, aba, ama illegal foreigners, nama, abantu, bangapandle, abafige, la, ezwe ni, gonke mtecho. Buona, bazo kavoa, nje, esmweni, sese mbilo, esputumayo, ama emergency, medical services. Ebese kuba, uku ti, nezi, fo, eztila, ezzi, notifiable, mshame, njengo, covid, i ganji. Eh, ne, mbilo ge, eh, basic, uku ti, usizo, putumayo, lo, lo, uku ti, agalthole, esbeldela. Bazu kwaaz, uku ti, ba kavege, ganja, lo, goda, konko kunye, ngage, babe, nelungele, uku ti, baitole, lezo inzizo. Eh, i ngaya, ne ge, njego be, benkazi, uku ti, omtecho segelo, kuskaba. Eh, samashumamabilineschaka lom sia shu, uku ti, zonke, ingane, eskona, emgeline, la, weswe, sia, fanale, uku ti, zithole, longusizo, leze mbilo, so. Ingane, nama, ktiwa, i, 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 ingane, yomondo, wangapandle, ofige, ezwe ni, gonke mtecho, uzoguaz, uku ta kavege. Ebese uku ti, i varashi, zonage, zitata, umshwalense, wazo, uku ti, sia varasha, zikwaz, uku ti, zkavege. Ngage, zikavoe, NHI. Then I'll go to clause five, that talks to registration as users. Eh, eligible persons must register and that includes children with accredited healthcare providers or establishments. Newborns will be automatically registered at birth and supervising adults must register children in a childhooded household. And there will be use of biometrics and other prescribed information eh, during registration. Eh, lanage, siti, mangabe, umundo, eh, register. U, uku ti, wongu mundo, njego basi, kona, njesa, zonke, line clean. Fanaleso, eshambesi, oregister, sipalisu, uku ti, sizo, besa, abase, benzisi, benziza, zo, zezimbi lo. Eh, ne, ingane, ngongjalo, uku ti, ingane, abanyi, ingane, mangabe, zalwa, nazozizo, register, ganjalo. Eh, ne, ingane, ezngane, nazofanaleshambesi, obaliswa. Eh, emzinigele, esii, epetwe eh, i ngane, lugu si, kubiza ngama childhooded households, sia zu, uku ti eh, abantu. Zesele zodwa, kwe, kube, nom, a, pige, okona, okadele, zoe. Anu, uku ti, zopaliswa, uku ti, za, sizo ba, abantu, abazu, kwaaz, uktola, usizo, leze mbilo, e beldela. Eh, kuya, tatuage, kuyobe, kuse, tatuage, i thupa. Na, yonge, eminyi, minindi, ngwane, ezo, ezo, paliswa, uku ti, umondo, uzobe, e, umondo, ozobe, etola, usizo, ngapanzi, kwa le, siskwama. Na, ne, beldela ge, no, dogoteela eh, bonge, ama GP, i, i, ama lukuzane. Abantu, abba, abakale, ipeselane, ingane, zonke, zona, zonke, sizo, bese ipaliswa, uku ti, nazo. Izo, ne, nigeza, usizo, leze mbilo. Ngilule ngie, eskabene, sestupa, o clause six, so, mto la, o page nine, kula, mtecho, kumtecho swivinywa. Lanage, siku luma ngama lungelo, abase benzisi, benzimbi lo. We're talking about rights of healthcare users. Eh, healthcare users will be having the following rights. Number one, it will be a right to quality healthcare services, free at the point of care. The information relating to the fund, the service benefits as well as personal information. And eh, the healthcare user will not be refused access to healthcare services on unreasonable grounds. Eh, they'll have access to healthcare within a reasonable timeframe. They'll have reasonable deci- eh, reasonable decisions about his or, or their health care will be communicated immediately. They'll be able to submit complaints if there are any and they'll be entitled to receive written reasons for fund's decisions. And they'll be able to purchase healthcare services that are not covered by the fund through a complimentary voluntary medical insurance scheme. So ge, lana, amalungele, abantu, abazu, bebe, thola, lolusizo, leze mbilo. Uku ti, umondo, akwaz, uku ti, atolu, usizo, leze mbilo, olse, kopelena, npezulu. Eh, la, lapo ge, uyobe, enakipinge, shisenti, zobe, thola mahala. Eh, mangabe, uko na, i, isfiso, afutsa, ukuwazi, ngena, ba, siskwama, le, sizo, kwaaz, uku ta thole. Akwaz, uktola, no, uku ti, izi, pui, izi, ndo, akwazi, ama benefits, azo, banao. Ebese uku tige, angega, za, ngajelwe, uku ti, atole, usizo, leze mbilo. Eh, mangabe, izatu, zingabona, gali. Akwaz, uku ti eh, mangabe, eding, usizo, ngokutumayo, atole. Eh, ebese uku ti, ngomo, eh, tatuwa, i fund, eh, aziso, ngazo, mangabe, ti, usizo, oltila, ngakuzo, ulthole, aziso, ngeskati. Ebese akwaz, ge, no, uku ti, afagi, skalazo, no, me complaint, ngaleso, ngale, ngaleso, sngomo. Eh, mangabe, futi, kune, izatu, lezo, zuku ti, ngajelwa, no, uku ta, ngaltholu, sizo, fanalesipalu, azthole, sipalu, panzi. Ebese ge, uku ti, kona, izi, i, inziza, eztila, umondo, ange, ge, azo, akwaz, uku thola, ngenga, uku ti. Eh, ifund, eh, iskavege, ebese uku tige, umondo, mangabe, eno, enes, eno, medical aid. Akwaz, uku ti, azkave, ngazo, lokoge, kufana nezi, ndo, zuku ti, mshame. Eh, ma funu, uku ti, abemu, she, abe, nama hips, izi, ngai, inde, ganjalo. Nama, zinyama, kolide, yonge, le, ondo. Uyobe ge, eseskokela, yena, ge, medical aid, yak. Ngoba, le, siskwama, le, sisi, pegele, imbi lo, aspegele, izindu, sama accessories, isitelin. Ngilule ngie, ge, eskabene, sas kombis, o clause seven, that talks to the healthcare services coverage. Eh the fund ten. Eh where a provider or establishment is unable to provide a registered service, then the facility or provider must transfer the user to another provider or establishment. Eh the user must enter at the primary healthcare level and follow referral pathways as conditions of entitlement. Eh the minister must designate central hospitals as semi-autonomous or that will mean they are national government components. And then the treatment will not be funded if no, there's no medical necessity, there's no cost effectiveness and it's not included in the formulary. And if the fund declines a benefit, then it should provide reasons and allow for an appeal process. Njabengisho uko ti eh te in dao ke esobe thola kona usizo leze mbilo. I i bo na ke njoba benkshilo uko ti nabofanelebe register es izi in dao ezo be zinigeza lolusizo leze mbilo. Ngaba utogoteela ngaba isbeldela eh lapo ke umuntu mangabe ekala efuna usizo. Fanele akale ayewe primary healthcare level. Oguinjela ogu umnyango uko ti angene eh eh ndelele nyokusiza gala uweze mbilo. Loko ge kushu uko ti angaya kutogoteela o general practitioner no ma ayeh clinic. Ebese kuba ibona bazobe se berifea bemesa eh eh ibeldela esngulu. So, umuntu angega saaguazuka tavela esbeldela. Be se eti ay ngipetwe ikanda ngesbeldela fanele akale o primary healthcare level. Eh ungongo sheke uyena ke ozobeke eh nigazweni kunye uko ti adisine ah ah designate no ma oke ibeldela itile uko ti guzo ba ama central hospitals. Ogzo ba ibeldela ifana na no albetluthuli etehui no uko tige lezo ibeldela. Kuyobe guzo be kuyobe ibeldela ezi imele. Gotya zizo be zisa i uhlala kahulmeni. No tig- no uko tige eh usizo leze mbilo. Ngegele zelokelue ma uko ngabe kbonaga loko tige asiko istingo zoku ti umuntu ah enzelu lolosizo leze mbilo. Njabengisho nje izi nama hipsi ama zinyakolite kanjalo kanjalo. Mangabe kbonaga loko ti asiko futi nasoshoeni lezinziza eszokokelwa. Umuntu zokuazuka uko ti asebense i medical aid yake. No uko tige isiskwama ngabe singaba uko ti sikokele ama benefit no musizo oltili. Kufanele uko ti zinigeze izatuzo uko ti gunani eh lowumudengega zaltholu sizo. Ebese siya i sho futi indela uko ti umuntu afage i appeal process. No ma uku kala uku uku apila uku uku ngayanga uko ti aguazuka umuntu atole lolosizo. Eh uclause eight ge talks to the cost coverage as I did indicate that eh it will be free at the point of care. Umuntu agesu kipa ngeshisendi mangabe edinga usizo leze mbilo. Ma yengenanje eh se chari eh petwe izinyo. Ngena ku dentist, ngena nje ukombi zinyolako. Bagu bagu ilongo bial kipa mabil kipa. Ba fagi filling mangabe be fagi filling gotya auke. Ebese ngidiaku clause nine shaka lombili. Iskaba lezo seshaka lombili so thola uko page eleven. This eh clause establishes the fund. It says that the fund will be eh established eh as a schedule three capital A public entity. This will be eh in terms of the Public Finance Management Act. Ogu shuku tige lisiskwama lezi kuzoba iskwamas kahulmeni. Ogu i i ingambaani kahulmeni kahlal. Ezo beke isoi thola la mangabe smuga o schedule three capital A wi PFMA uyusho ingambaani kahulmeni. Okfana no SCOM, okfana no PRSA kanjalo kanjalo. So, na yole fund isobe i i ingambaani kanjalo. Ebese ngiyaku clause ten that talks to the functions of the fund. Uko tige lisiskwama yin umsabenzwaas. Eh the fund will actively purchase services and enter into procurement contracts for goods. Eh it will eh ensure that eh people are timely reimbursed, the service providers actually. And then it will determine payment rates annually in a prescribed manner. It will ensure that eh there's appropriate funding for healthcare services at various levels. It will monitor the quality and standard of healthcare services. It will eh look at the performance profile of all service providers and also pay for performance. Eh in terms of performance. It will monitor eh the impact of the fund in addressing healthcare needs. It will also lie as an exchange information between the Department of Health, the entities and statutory councils. It will maintain a national database of population in terms of their demographics and eh epidemiology. It will perform functions in the most cost-effective and efficient manner. Eh it will ensure that the the funding is aligned to health policies approved by the minister as well as the responsibility to contribute to the protection, promotion, improvement and maintenance eh of the health of the population. So, umsabenzwa lezi kwa ma uko ti uke ukelelo uko ti zonki inziza zese mbilo. Ya uyazkokela eh no ma uyaztega mangabe zifunagala. Eh uzo guazuke uko ti kobe ibona basho uko ti bakokelan ngama rates ah oh no mangez kanjani. Ebese uko tige eh uzo xola futu uko ti ikopelo lpezulu ini leze mbilo. Upego uko tige ama ibeldela no dogoteela ba performa ngendele ifanele ini. Eh uguazuka uko tige ube umkumani sipagati kwa umnyango weze mbilo. Na zo zonke injaga zkahulmeni. Uguazuka upego uko tige eh usiza gala weze mbilo eh imali ayimosheki. Eh zithola gala ngendela ezingalize malezpanzi. Upinde futi eh upego uko ti eh umuntu wonge uyaguazuka uko ti a protectege. No uko ti aguazuka uko ti a improve eh isimo sze mbilo yak. And then I'll go to clause eleven eh isasho se shumin iskaba se shuminanya. Last ku isasho se start with chapter three. La skuluma kona nama powers ayewand. So, thola ku i kasile shuminambiili page twelve. Eh the fund will employ personnel and purchase or acquire goods, equipment, land, buildings and related assets. It will draw, draft, accept, endorse, discount, sign and issue promiserian notes, bills and other negotiated or transurable eh instruments. It will insure itself against any loss, damage, risk or liability. It will investigate complaints against the fund, providers, establishments or suppliers. It will eh implement best practices in terms of purchasing of services, procurement of goods, efficient delivery of healthcare services, data collection as well as analysis and fraud prevention. It will also rela- research relating to improving universal health coverage and exchange information with organs of state. It will also institute or defend legal proceedings and negotiate lowest possible price for services and goods. So, iskwama lezi sizo guazuka tisasho abasebenzbaso. Ogu ibona abazobe betola zonke inziza zokseben zozozozokseben zese mbilo. Eh imshini etingegalayo. No uko tige i mangabe kufanele tholo mlhaba. Mangabe kufanele kwaki isbeldela ibona bazobe benza loko eh na wonge ama assets azobe etingeega ku lezo ibeldela. Bazoguazuka gefuti uko ti eh kube ibona abadraftayo, abakokayo ama promiserian notes nama bills of ama ama negotiable instruments. Uko ti mangabe kune xelo lo uko ti umuntu aguabaguazuka uko ti bakokelege. Ngaba ama sheke kube izimozo uko ti abanye bakokelo ama bitcoins kule insugu. So, iskwama lezi zobe senza gonge lok. Sizo be futi sipegelela no uko ti aguazuka uko ti gula xenge i impasha zkahulmeni no ma zilimali. Eh bazoguazuka futu uko ti ba penye mangabe kune ekalo ngaso iskwama. No ma isbeldela uko ti abantu abaltu usizo abaldingayo. No ma ama suppliers mangabe engaliti ivan i i ama 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 assets afunoa abantu ibeldela kanjalo kanjalo. Azoguazuka uko ti futi mangabe kune simosa fraudi. Baguazuka uko ti ba penye eh baguazuka futu uko ti ba reseche no ma ba ya ba 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 reseche ngendaba uko ti si li nyusaga kanjani zinga. Logo tuongu umuntu atole eh imbilo engono logo sikbizanga i universal health coverage. Uko ti umuntu aguazuka uko ti asiza gala uweze mbilo. No uko tige eh bazu mangabe kuna makala. Ibona bazu defender la omakala akamga. Ebese ngiyaku ipod tige sizo itola lapo isasho keni sesine oko chapter four. Last kuluma kona ngepod of fund. Eh iskaba se shuminambiili uclause twelve. Ukuluma kuku establisho weboard uko ti sungula kanjange. Ilage sisho kona uko ti ilizo sungula leli body and eh i governance ya i board is accountable to the minister. Ungongo she bo nabapendula ungongo she mangabe sebe sunguliu. Ebese iskaba se shuminan start uclause thirteen talks to the constitution and composition of board. Iboard tige will have eleven members that are appointed by the minister with cabinet approval. And their expertise will be ranging amongst somewhere eh people with healthcare service financing, health economics, public health planning, monitoring and evaluation, law, extramarital sciences, information technology and communication. And eh the term of the board will be a five-year term which is only renewable once. And the exclusions, people that will be excluded will be those that are having eh conflicts of interest. And then the minister will appoint an ad hoc panel that will interview candidates and also recommend a shortlist to minister for appointment. Then the minister will have powers to remove a board member on specified conditions. And the minister also has powers to dissolve the board after inquiry and cabinet approval on specified conditions. Eh then ke the minister will have to appoint an acting board for a period of three months. So, lanasisho uko ti iboard ilili ilizo ba nama lungu. Abantu ba abazoba be shuminanya eleven members abazobe be kowe ungongo she. Envagutie ekulume ne cabinet no ma iskunguskahulmen. Guzo ba banduke abanobke abanobkepe she optile weze mbilo. Eh ezasmali zebilo eh umnoto weze mbilo health economics. Eh i public health uku i planela uko tige i i ezembo zompaga tis hamba kanjani. Abaxola yo imonitoring and evaluation abantu abazobe bazbe no zloazile zomteto. Kuba abantu abaguazuka balasbaliswa sikbizanga extramarital sciences. Kube sikube abantu abano abazana abazi injela ke zokumana ne IT. So, ge ipod ilelo ge abantu bio kowa iskati esimnyage mlchano. Ezo guazuka uko ti ivusalelo kanye. Gotya ge umuntu mangabe uko ti une conflict of interest. No ma o umuntu mlhambe une sbedela. Ngega zogu aguazuka uko ti angene epodini ngoba umuntu oyobe eh ne eh ne injoso no ma eh eh zuza. Gulesizi mozo ngega zoguazuka tange ne podini. Ungongo sheke uyena oyobe eh hole eh 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 appointee. Leso skungu esiyoguazuka uko ti si sense yinjolo kono yama candidates. Eh azobe efuna ungena epodini. Le ebese ke lele leso skungu so netso hambesa ilisti ku ungongo shuku ti nababantu esiba bone ku ibona fanelebe angene podini. Eh ungongo sheke unama njla uko ti abkipia abantu epodini. Mangabe kune kune zimo estile. Na uyaguazuka futu uko ti amese ipod ilonge normal kritelo ngipodi. Envagutie kube no penyo no uko ti eh i cabinet no ma iskunguskahulmen eh sesboni uko ti kune stingo. Ebese ke ekoga abantu abazobe be bambeile ezipodi iskati se nyange ndatu. Ogu shuku tige iskatin se nyange ndatu. Fanele kube kalwa i process uko ti ku kowe abanye abazu ngene podini. And then uclause fourteen talks to the chairperson and deputy chair of the board. The minister appoints the chair after consulting cabinet and the board selects the deputy. Lanage ushalo weboardi ukowa ungongo she. Ebese uko tige iboard ilona ilonage eli oketa uskele slalo wali board. And then clause fifteen talks to the functions and powers of board. Eh here the board needs to fulfill the functions of an accounting authority as required by the PFMA. It has to meet at least four times a year. It has to advise the minister on matters relating to the fund including financing, administration, pricing etcetera. Eh the board also will define type of reports that are required from the executive management. Lanage skuluma kuno ti i i i epe ama powers no ma ama njla epod no uko ti fanele lenzeni. Lanage siasho uko tige ilo uyena ibona abapendulayo. Eh eh parlamenti ibona abapete iskwama lezi. Eh njoba opfma eshu uko ti eh fanele kubeni accounting authority. Mangu kona uke dayo iboard ilonel pendulayo. Eh fanelegele llangane i katezine ngonyaga eh ilonafuti eli 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 advisor ungongo she. Mangabe kune inda benzo uko ti iskwama mlhambe kuyashota imalini. Eh ebase benzini no ma ku priza i i i usizo leluleze mbilo. Eh ilonafuti ke fanele li shu uko ti lifuna ama reporti ama ama reporti akamga eh kulune ipezulu abe ngalshoboluuni. And then uclause six. The conduct and disclosure of interest. It says any paid employment that will conflict with the work of the fund eh will have to be disclosed and there has to be declaration of interest if any. Lanage sisho uko ti mangabe uko na injela yoku spata itile. No ma umuntu eh 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 hola ekelini. Fanele mangabe uko takshaisha niskwama. Fanele asho uko tai eh mlhambe nguto dogotele ekelini. Asho uko tika nginesha chari kanji kanji eh a declare ama interest ak. Ke ukuze mangabe i ngomo itatwa maguzoba nesngomo esobe skonde nenaye. Eh ngogo umsabenzwaake aguazuka uko ti ahok iswe angabe ingainyo uko ti akulume. Izindo zkanjalo ngoba uyobe naye ezozomilisayen. And then uclause seventeen talks to the procedures eh of the board. Uko ti iboard will determine its own procedures. Bazu sbonela uko ti eh ama procedure abohamba kanjani. Then uclause eighteen talks to the remuneration and reimbursement wherein we're saying the rates would be determined between the Minister of Health and the Minister of Finance. Lanage kushu uko tige eh ama member epod azokokelwa. Eh mangabe ke ungongo shu zebilo ese kulumisayen. Iskwama eh will find this in clause eh in in page sixteen. Where in clause nineteen talks to the appointment of the CEO. It says this person must have technical competence and experience. The board will interview the candidates eh for the CEO. CEO will be a term of five years which is only renewable once. And then the board also has powers to recommend the removal of the CEO. Eh lanage non eh experience ekpatin eh ipod tige eguzoba ilona eli interviewer no ma elenza injolo kono yama candidates. Ebese ke ibegage i ngomo Ebese ge ibegage inngomo za zo kunongoshe zebilo eh iskati soksebenza. Salisiskulu iskati se nyage mshano esuvuselewa kanye. Ebese ge eh i board futi namandla u guti im. Functions of the CEO are designated by the board. The CEO has to run an efficient administration, including human resources investigative unit, complaints of fraud, corruption and has to appoint the staff to the fund. The CEO liaises with the district management office. The eh the CEO has to establish the units of planning, benefit, provider rates and payments, accreditation, purchasing, contracting, payment administration, performance mon- monitoring as well as risk and fraud. The CEO also has to prepare the annual report for the for the board. And has to report to the board at least four times a year to discuss matters affecting the fund. And eh has to appear before parliament quarter quarterly. So ge eh iskulu lesi isona fanespendule potini ngoba sikashue i pote. Eh na oyonge msebenza sienzayo izobe ishiwo i pote u guti senzeni. Fanele senze shogutisi pete i administration eh esebenza gashle. Ogua abasebenzi bonge kube umnyango wazokepenya. Guba abandu u u u ushaga ulpege lela iskalo. Ebese kube ilaba abapega ndaba ye fraud ne corruption opololo. Guba enze shogutu labo bandu bakashue ngogwane lugu tibenze leondo le. Eh ebese u guti akuba uiyena fotokumana ne ne district health management office. Oh akakumana ne ne district umnyango u guti guenzagala ne umnyango ile guongama districts. Ebese ge eh 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 prepare ne annual report. Ogwe reportile eh iswaku auditor general apindege a reporte potini kane ngonyaga. Apinda vele nasepal- naseparlament eh Cape Town mangabe fanele ifund iveli. And then eh isha- isasugosa stupa. U chapter six talks to the committees to be established by board. Eh u clause twenty-three talks to the committees of board. Eh provides that the board will determine its governance committees eh which will meet four times a year. And then u clause twenty-four talks to the technical committees. That the board will establish these committees. And the persons that are participating must have relevant expertise. Must be pe- people who are fit and proper. And they shouldn't have a conflict of interest and must not abuse eh their positions. So ge i board lana iyona ezobona ge ikala ma komidaayo azoshanga nagabili ka- kane ngonyaga. Ebese kuba nama technical commishes eh committees ama komite obkepe she na awazobe egalwe iloni pote. Fanele kuba eh abandu abano abano loazi olpusile gulezo ililelo. Guba abandu aba fit and proper noma kuba abandu aba koto eh abangabi nama conflicts. Bangabi nezindo aba funuku izusa. Bangas sebenzi si futi ga be iskunja sabo mangabe beshalagla oma komite. Ebese siyaku isasugosa skumbisa. U chapter seven talks to the advisory committees that are going to be established by the minister. Eh will find this chapter on page eighteen of the bill. Clause twenty-five provides for the benefits advisory committee. Eh the members of the committee will have expertise in medicine, public health, health economics, epidemiology, the rights of patients. And then the minister appoints the chair of this committee. Eh the committee will last for five years and it is going to be renewable, the term will be renewable once. Eh it it will determine the service benefits by level of care. Eh it will ensure the cost effective treatment guidelines as well as regulations to detail terms of reference. So ge leli komite ilili eli bege ama benefits. Ekfanele kuba abandu abano obkepe she uze mbilo. Guba abandu aba pete u u abano obkepe she be public health eh umnoto uze mbilo. Eh izifo nama lungelo es- es guli eh unongoshege uiyena ozoko ra shalo wa leli komite. Elizo shala iskati se nyage ezimnyaga emshano eh vuselewa kanye. Eh ibona ge leli komite elzo bona guti ama benefi- ama service benefits ah akokelega ganjani. Ebese guti futi eh kube ibona benza eh imteto ngangi u guti basebenza ganjani. Eh eh ngineseni ezembilu. And then u clause si twenty-six talks to the healthcare benefits pricing committee. This committee will recommend prices for health service benefits. And then eh the minister appoints the chair. This committee will comprise of sixteen persons with the following expertise. It must be someone with extramarital science, someone with eh medicine eh epidemiology, health management, health economics, health financing, labour and rights of patients. And one member will be eh representative of the minister. Na loge leli komite eli begene nozuzu eh ama benefits. Ogutu umundi aguazuguti awathole uze mbilo ilizo belgowe u u unongoshe ustaloa konne. Ilonage elzo belishu guti imali fanele zizo ko kelwa ganjan. For wongama health service benefits u guti azoko kelwa ganjan. Guzo bage abandu aba ishu minestupa. Guba abandu abano obkepe she uze mbilo eh uze umnoto uze mbilo. Eh imali zezembilu abandu abaguazu uchuluma ngama lungelo. Abasebenzi kanyenama lungelo abasebenzi. Ebese guti o yetwa umundi ge oyobe emele unongoshe leli komite. Then clause twenty-seven on page nineteen talks to the stakeholder advisory committee. Committee will be having representatives from the professional councils, the health entities, the labour, civil society organizations, professional associations as well as advocacy groups. Eh people with interests will have to disclose them. And this will include personal and financial interest. And then procedures and remuneration will be determined by the minister of health in consultation with the minister of finance. Na guleli komite ge gioba abandu aba nobkepe she abathile eh bayobe bekamuka akuma council atile. Eh noma ama associations eh kuba ama advos- advocacy groups. Abandu aba emele impagaati aba emele abasebenzi ganjalo anjalo. Logutige umundi mangabe eh ne eh ne nama interest atile noma izinlososhtile fanele asho. Noma mangabe eh nobelwa nobthile obu personal aguazuguti abu- abu disclose. And then ge ama iholo la leli komite naloo liobe li i li bewe unongoshe uze zebilo. Envagutu ekulume unongoshe uze zsmali. Ngijulenge yegu chapter eight. Eh isasugosa shaka lombeles kuluma ama general provisions that are applicable to the operation of fund. Eh so itola loku page nineteen where in u clause thirty-one talks to the role of minister. The minister eh is responsible for governance and stewardship of the national health system and the NHI fund. He must also delineate the role and responsibilities of fund. The national and provincial departments eh having considered the constitution and the national health act in order to prevent duplication and ensure equitable provision and financing. So ge lanase ashuguti gulesiskaba se mashumama tatunanye. U guti u unongoshe uiyena ozobe pete ushelo le NHI. Uiyena futige ozobe eh ekadrisa nginlela u guti iskwama soksebenza ganjani. Eh unational umnyango unational nama province uzo busebenza ganjani eh lapage oyobe epe. Omteto s- omteto segelo ogwe constitution kanyenomteto uze mbilo. Lo esu sebenzayen njenga manji national healthcare. Eh lage gwenza u guti una i ntsiza zo zezembilu zinga duplicate tegi. Loguti zi zi zishinsegelu nginlela eh ekondil. And then u clause te- thirty-two talks to the role of the department. Here we're looking at the national health act as well as the constitution. Eh the department is responsible for the guidelines for norms and standards. It's responsible for the hu- human resource planning, the development, production and management. It also coordinates eh health services. It plans development of public or and private health establishments. It also ensures the integration of annual health plans. And subject to section fifty-seven, the minister may introduce national health act amendments to delegate functions to provinces designate categories of hospitals, autonomous legal entities as well as establish eh district health management offices as government components. So lanage umnyango omkuulu uze mbilo unational. Fanele guba wona okipamshalanze njeela nama norms and standards ama opel uze mbilo. Ugashwa kabantu eh gwenza u guplena u gutige. Ezembilu zompagaati kanyenala baba private u guti kuzo soksebenza ganjani. Ebese gutige unongoshe uiyena ge oyobe esenikeza amandla u guti eh ama province zaza soksebenza ganjani. Ne ibedela lezi ezobe zizmele zinga nyaga hulmeni njengo Albert Luthuli. U guti zizo soksebenza ganjani nama districts nayo u guti azosoksebenza ganjani. Eh nama province ge njengoba ebese ngshil u guti azonikezwa u guti izipi inda. Eh soksebenza ngao ezama province eh nikeswa unongoshe amandla kanyenomnyango lo inational eh. Kizojulage ngie las kuluma kona nama general provisions applicable to the operation of fund. U clause thirty-three on page twenty talks to the role of medical schemes. Once. U guti ongu mondo ne medical aid eh mangabe lomteto soksebenza. Eh i medical aid ioba iskebenza ezitop up la eh NHI ingafiki konne. Ogushugutige mangabe kuneste ngeshtile ezanga viwe ifund. Umundi ge i medical aid yake iobe simsebenzela labo. U clause thirty-six talks to the district health management office. Where in the national government component eh will manage, facilitate, support and coordinate the provision of primary healthcare services for personal healthcare and non-personal healthcare at district level. Lanage ila eh si kuma districts u gutige uzoba nama office. Uwona azobe epegele u guti kuma province ushelo lugnikeswa uze mbilo kamba ganjan. U clause thirty-seven talks to the contracting unit for primary healthcare. Where we are saying the preferred organization unit will manage fund contracts at primary healthcare level. And then there'll be organizational unit which will include district hospitals, clinics, community health centers, world-based outreach teams and private providers within a specified area. And it will assist the fund in understanding the burden of disease. Accredited public and private providers, contract management and as well as ensure eh referral systems that are functional, integrated in both public and private healthcare services. So ge le le uniti ekuiyona ezobe i i contractor. Noma ingena eh ivumeloaneni eh iyona ge ezobe i pete u guti ishelo leze zsmali. Eh kuma pri- pri- primary healthcare level lu hamba ganja- ganjani bakokelega ganjani. Logutige i iskebenzi impagatini eh ngoguazugutige i. I lello zizi fo ezkoona zinjani. Ibedela ezkoona ezkahulmeni noma izizmele zikokelewa ganjani. Kanye genokumani sage both ama private ne public healthcare services u guti aguazuguti assebenzegalimpagatini. Then we'll move to clause thirty-eight that talks to health products procurement unit. Eh in this clause eh we. I it provides for centralized facilitation and coordination of procurement of healthcare eh goods. Eh the health products procurement units must uni- eh must determine selection, procurement process, price negotiation as well as contract management. It must also support the benefits advisory committee to develop and maintain a formula of essential medicine list and essential equipment list. It must also review formulae taking ac- into account eh burden of disease, new medicines, evidence of treatment options as well as prices. Le unitige i procurement uchugu ibona batenga i ntsiza zezemiti. Eh iyona ge ayobipegele u guti eh i guazugnegoshe tama price kutama nan ehle. Logutige i pete i i i contract management. I iguazugnegoshe tama contracts na labo aba provider ama services. And then clause thirty-nine talks to the accreditation of service providers. It says that eh there must be certification from the office of health standards compliance. Eh the accra- accreditation eh must provide, the person accredited must provide minimum range of services. Eh there must be appropriate number and mix of health professionals who are service providers. It must eh there must be adherence to treatment protocols and referral pathways. There must be submission of information in terms of the identification, diagnostics, procedure codes, treatment, length of stay, referral and any other information. There must be adherence to national pricing regimen. There must be eh the accreditation must eh ensure that there's a con. Galibinding contract with establishments or providers for a maximum period of five years. And the conditions for renewal must be based on benefits package, the certification, the staffing mix, the guidelines, the referral path. And the provider will have to be reissued eh accreditation. And if they are refused eh they can also follow the appeal process. So lanage sisho ab- ab- u guti lava abanikeza i ntsiza zezembilu. Fanele babe accredited noma banikezwa malunge lo guti banikeze lezo ntsiza uze mbilo. Eh fanele kuba kuba abanduke abaguazuguti eh banikeze i minimum range of services. Noma kuzo nikeswa ikope lo guti inongani onga ongenzi mangabe se kishwa ama regulations. Na logutige eh labo ba yo fanele u guti basho guti ba pete abandu abanjani nomas gulezi njani eh gokula wazo. Logutige eh ku- ku landelu mapi ama codes eh procedure u guti batritwe. Logutige basale iskatis nganani enda wenzu ibedela eh logutige imali ibona bachaja ganjan. Eh labanduke bazu beni- benikeswe iku nyalo glapa abandu ipiro di emnyaga emshano. Ebese gutige izo vuselewa njalo envagutu emnyage mshano eh vuselewa ge mangabe se bonakalu. U guti lowo umundi lowo eh una una mapi ama benefits. Logutige i staff sake si mixege ganjana abanda banalipu obkepe she aba konne. Eh logutige u kijulsela ikuli uguazuguti a- aijulseleganjan. Onga nikeswa ngage accreditation nenye une lungelo u guti ajulise iskalo logo sibiza ngayi appeal. Ebese clause forty talks to the information platform of the NHI fund. Providers and establishments will have to submit information as prescribed. The fund must use information to plan budget monitor adhere to guidelines. And the person- personal information of user. And the person, the personal information of user must always remain confidential. So lana ge si ashuguti eh. Laba aba, aba leta iinzi za, zo, ngogwazembilo, onga aba ipeljela, nommo dogotela. Fanele bahambi seke imniningwane, njengo ba kufanele eh, iskwameni, iskwifund. Fanele bawa zukutiba ziduebeleke, logo sikbisanga mapache ti. Eh, besewe, bekunseka futuguti imniningwane iskuli ishale ikunewe, ube infisho. Clause forty-one talks to the pa- payment of service providers. Yeah, we are saying the primary care, eh, eh, the primary care providers will be contracted and remunerated via prescribed capacity. Capacitation strategy. Then the specialists and hospitals will be paid based on performance. The emergency medical services eh, their payment will be ca- will be, will be kept. And it will be case-based fee. And then the minister will make regulations relating to payment mechanisms. Lanage si shugutige, laba bala leta iinzi za, ba, azoko kelega kancjani. Eh, ah, labo, aba, o, o, twaypeche, nomama specialist, azoko kelega, ugo t'i. Babone ikuli, ezengagi, benze, umsebenzo njani. Laba bema ambulance, na konna, izo kepoa imaliya konna. Eh, nogutiba visitee abanda banjani, abebedi nga usizo liputumai. Ungongo shege uyena, ozogwenza ama regulations, nomma omteto, u, 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 umteto lo. Ozobushugutige uzogwenzegaga kancjani, ukokelega wa bandu. Then clause forty-two talks to the complaints, lodging of appeals. Wherein we are saying eh, appeals must be lodged within sixteen days of receipt of notification by the fund. Clause forty-four talks to the tribunal. Eh, the tribunal will consist of five persons that will be appointed by the Minister of Health. Clause forty-five talks to the powers of the tribunal, it says their powers will be similar to those of the High Court. And it can also set aside the fund decision. Then clause forty-six talks to the secretariat eh, that would be eh, basically the staffing of the fund. Then clause forty-seven wo- talks to the procedure and remuneration. Eh, of the tribunal wherein we are saying the remuneration will be eh, in accordance to. Those funds after the consultation with the Minister of, of Finance. Eh, there shouldn't be any conflict of interest. And eh, the tribunal also may seek redress through the courts. Or the complainants may seek redress through the courts. So lana ge si shuguti manga begne ikalo, iskwamalis eh, isoz- sizo thola izi ikalo. Eh, sispenye, ebese ge si balela futi lowo, ucomplainant in writing, ugo t'i, singumesa tin. Umundu ge onga nelsegile, ngesngumo, uyobe se kwazuguti afage i appeal, iskatinese inzuge, izi shu- ezama. Eh, ama shumi, aistupa, sixty days, envah uktola lezo sngumo. Ugo t'ya kala, ngan- ngesngumo se, se, se fund. Ebese eh, ikala lo beselulage, lia ku tribunal, ewu abantu aba, aba is- aba isxanu. Abazo bebe gowey ungongo she, amanla ayo i tribunal ge, izo aba ifana namanja eh, ngandolo epageeme, uwu hi court. Eh, ya kwazuge futu, ugo t'i eh, bege ekeleni, sngumosa yu fund. And then the secretary atiyayo, ilo kuzane, i tribunal le, istafu, sizo, sizo, izoba ne istafu eh, nokokele wa wabo. Uzoba ku imali, ezobe zivunyaliwe eh, pagatika ungongo she wesembilo, noe zezmali. Eh, akfanele kuba umundu onama interest eh, ugo tahlale, kuli tribunal. Nogutige nabo, baya kwazuguti ba fage, i, ilo kuzane, bakjulsele i, elo, ngandolo. And then eh, in chapter ten, we're looking at the financial matters. Lanage, si says, si says, shaga ni, i, 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 uhlaga, le shumi eh, ku page twenty-six. Eh, there's clause forty-eight that provides for the sources of funding, which will be through appropriations, interest and bequest. Eh, clause forty-nine on page twenty-seven talks to the sources of income, which will be your appropriations. Your general taxes, the revenue eh, the shifting of funds from provincial equitable share and conditional grants. As well as the monies that will be coming from medical scheme, tax credits, the payroll tax, the surcharge on personal income. And then clause fifty talks to the auditing eh, auditor general of South Africa will be auditing the books of the fund. Clause fifty-one talks to annual reports. Wherein we're saying the submission to parliament, eh, the, the annual report will be submitted to parliament and the minister. Eh, the finances must be audited eh, and eh, the report must eh. Spell out the activities that have been undertaken and the progress made by the fund. As well as any other additional reporting information. Eh, lelulshaga ge, lukuluma ngo, ngenda bazazmali, ugo t'i imali, yalisa iskwamizokamga. Eh, imali ge zizo kamga, kule, ku- ku- appropriation, uwu imali, eyabiwa eh, ipalamende, njalo ngenyaga. Ugo tige, ibasu bebe kipa imali, engagana ni. Ge, ge, ndaweni, yogo tabazo taxwa, uwu i, general tax revenue, ugo t'i. Wongumondo o, o, uwu i tax brackete thile, uzo kwazuguti akoke injela. Eh, na go tige kuma provinces, kuekbalu, ugo t'isibangagi. Ebese kukiba, lendo, twayi equitable share, ugo t'i, i province zozothola malini. So lezo imali, lezo iskishwa, ziswa ku province, zesoya iskwameni. Ganyen nama conditional grants, la city konna, imali irungfensi, ugo t'ense, iztingo, izthile. Eskundenzoguti ise, u department isesoya iskwameningbo. Ebese go tige, nenndela le, ekuma, uma medical aid. La ma repays, la uma repays, ngagase zakina, asesoya iskwameni. Ebese go tige, na bassebenza, yoba zo, tatalwa nabindela. Eh, ne personal income tax ge, logo, siyazu kutnjalo, goinyaga siye, sihambe se ilo kuzane i. Si, 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 si file, po i tax, imali ge izo kamgalab. Ebese go tige eh, i, ngwa. Kwama, zizo bezipewa, mwanenge mapugul, olosimbiza odite general. Uyena ge uyobe kwanenge i, i, ngwadi. Ebese go t'i eh, si shugo se sama shuma, a, a islanu nanye, u fifty-one. Iskabala, sekuluma ge ngama annual report, uwu report, ufanele njalo ngonyaga alpume. Lilo report igeliwbeliya, ipalamende nagungongo she. Lizobe lip- li- li- shoguti imali, zizo be, zi, zikon- zikwan- waningazo. Zisho, li shofuti lilo report, ugo t'i, i pi imsebenzi, enzi we ifund, nogutii, isi hambia, ya kina. Api, ganyeke nagobongo, unye, okdinga, ugo t'i, go report. Eh, senfila ekunene, nige, I'm now at the end, the last chapter is chapter eleven that talks to the miscellaneous eh provisions. Yeah, w- we'll find this on page twenty-eight. Wherein clause fifty-two talks to the assignment of duties and delegation of powers. Clause fifty-three talks to the protection of confid- confidential information. Clause fifty-four talks to the offenses and penalties. Clause eh, fifty-five talks to the regulations. The six eh, that provo- provides for eh, the directives that will be issued by the fund in the government gazet. Then clause fifty-seven talks to the eh, transitional, transitional arrangements wherein we are saying. Eh, the application of this will be in two phases. Eh, phase one will be starting from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. And this will be eh, the health systems trending initiatives. The N H I in eh, legislation, which is this bill. The foundation for a fully functional fund. The purchasing of personal healthcare services for vulnerable groups. And then there'll be establishment of committees, which will be your national tertiary services. The training and development eh, committee, the benefits committee, the health techno- technology assessment committee. And eh, the migration of central hospitals. The structuring of the contracting units of primary healthcare. And the accreditation of healthcare service providers. As well as eh, the legislative amendments of twelve eh, pieces of legislation that will be finding in our schedule. And then the second phase will be starting from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-eight. Wherein eh, we'll then be looking at the continuation of health systems trending activities. The mobilization of additional resources as approved by cab- cabinet. As well as selective eh, contract of healthcare services from private eh providers. Eh, lelulshaga ge, loktina, le shumi nanye. Ila sekuluma konage, ngoguti ama powers, azo delegate waga kancjani. Nda bazama talala, ugo t'i eh, azo, a- azobe, u yini zindeza ama talala, nogutimundu jeza kancjani. Kuba ma regulations, ganyen nama directive, ugo t'i, i, 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 ifund, izobe, i kipa, i, 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 ilo, i, 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 kondiso. Enjalu uwu gazet. Ebese go tige, clause fifty-seven, loktina, ukuluma ge ngama, ama transitional arrangements, ugo tige. Eh, umteto uzo sebenza kancjani, njegoba ngishuguti eh, uzo be u ama phase ama bili. Eh, go ba uhulmeni, u, 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 uy- uy- uy bopeze, ugo t'i, omteto, ukale usebenza ngoktwele, ngok twenty twenty-nine. So kusukele akulonyaga, uya ku twenty twenty-six eh, uzo kwazuguti ge eh, kupaswe lo umteto sivinyo, njegoba suletile eh, guwa. Ak- 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 shabantu, kutre, noe, i, 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 komite zobelpegele, nama benefits, kanjalo kanjalo eh. Nogutinje, iskwamalis, si kwa zukuti, sibene foundation, ugo t'iswa zuksebenzegal'. Ebese go t'iku phase two, azo kala ngok twenty twenty-six, uyaku twenty twenty-eight. Kiobe ge se kbonakalu, ugo t'i, izi pezi nyezindo, ez'i, ez'i shot dayo, ufanele zitunie swe. Ganye, nenndabazazmali, ugo t'ine cabinet nayo, ibona, ugo tige eh, i, i, itata lupi, ulo kuzane, ifaga. Eh, i, 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 ya approver, ugo t'i, kupagwe ama additional resources, manga be edinge. Ebese go tige, nama, nama, nama service providers, atile, agwa zukashonswe, ugo t'i. Iskwamalis, sibeno bljelwano, nomma nama contracts nao, ugo t'bassebenzane nao. Ebese ge, njegoba besengshil, ugo t'i, ku, ku shedulietu, ku clause fifty, fifty-eight. Eh, sinelisi, yazo, yaya yongi umteto, ezobe i repealwa, ilo umteto sivinyo. Eh, we have, yeah, the list of all the, the, the laws or the acts that will be repealed or amended by this eh, by this bill. Yeah, we're talking about the Medicines and Related Substances Act of nineteen sixty-five. The Occupational Diseases in Mines and Works Act of nineteen seventy-three. The Health Professions Act of nineteen seventy-four. The Dental Technicians Act of nineteen seventy-nine. The Allied Health Professions Act of nineteen eighty-two. The Medical Schemes Act of nineteen ninety-eight. The Mental Healthcare Act of two thousand and two. The National Health eh, Act, the Nursing Act of two thousand and five. As well as the Traditional Health Practitioners Act of two thousand and seven. So, yonge le umteto, ingase, ibegwe, ekalin, nome, i, i, i repealwe, nomma, izo, kujieelwa. Envah ugo t'i, lo umteto sivinyo, osupasil. Ngia bonakulu, ugo t'ningenezi tuba, ugo t'i, giubegu umteto, ngia bon.
Thank you so much. Tell us now, no more, nanesan. Asapeshwani, ge aba bapa i national health insurance, aba kwab. I am yango, aba kwabinje, twa ba i, yamkele lent. Tell us now. Ya bulela lakul, kama kuba, tikubeke, ezu mandimbulela. Unguni, umsebenza, wenzile, zo tella, ndio ugo t'i, samkele. Delay by unions, esnazo. Nga tayele, ndio ugo t'injenganga, kusinae, une hau, trelbas babone. Wamkele, klums- klumssebenzwech. Siabonga, uji nosa. Siabonga, asnaya, nintela. Siné contract na baba. Fanele nje, na tumkashu, tewa chungla, banga umeli. Onga bacho, ngeliswe libslungo, ugo sabasengwa. O, 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 wenzayo, bassebenzubako, akati. Nesivumelo ano, mamutlamin. Nesivumelo ano, mamupigisha. Nesivumelo ano, mamukutu, na baba. Yamfunsi, awase, djekutsumban. Pat. Nesivumelo ano, mamukat, na baba. San endrus. Ban. Nesivumelo ano, mamupan, bata nde, apa gongo, nisa, basengaki. Pa zo ikotala, ndio le N H I yenze, nige ga gushi. Godwa ge si aykela, i Office of Health Standards Compliance, ndio ugo t'i, isn't it, is it, ma public institutions we to. Si kinselis, ndio ugo t'i, asisutati materiel, esheli piti, si, 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 ma bek. Uwenze ndio, kuba figure ba credit, che, ube kutu eku right, ngoba ngoba wenzalo, you are killing the very system, and it was. Ya waso, ngela makleng. Siya frula ge njenganga. Eh. Izote, sngena ngoba, kuchelo, akon njenganga, kuzo t'i, ispramis, somasenga pambi. Ispramis, osetu, ekubeni, sitakuselu, dayo, yonge le, ngichusenzenga, ayu, ngoba kusitela, ugo t'i. Bonge abo, aba fisa, ugo t'i, pa pose, mko koleni. We N H I, besitcho ugo t'i, bayawa amkele, besitcho ugo t'i, aba wamkele. Samkele, wongumdu tin. Oza, na londo, esana yo, ya usungwa pambiili. And tell us now. Ya sbongela, mna, ya sbongela, obani dikwabele, mna. Go ku nitela, esisanda, esidi, mna, zingu nomakikiwa, wama jola. Di, funu pramis, sandas, tulangroshlo bongo, pramis, sandasak, aufiga ngapambi, uti kama, nesibongo. Nogutu sugapi, and then, ube so, sitchi, ndio ugo t'utinina, abanye, bese, kubama organizations, you, you, you are figure wakona. Your name, your surname, and the organization you are coming from, and then you put your submission. Kusabo, uybe ganga, so nitela, esosanda, esenja. Ni nasen, kambilitan, pamsa, niti tinas, songe, apa siya wam, ya opasis. Eh. Bana, funu kodi, samsebenzi, nyang, kota, shara, infedeli pegni, ngan, kono, ntilisandes, cho, yo sisi, ngoba shalo, lo, ngoba, siyake, juen, ya bana, bana, panket. Panse, zangoroshlo, bati, njenganga, bongo, bantu, bati, siyata, tabasengaki, kona, po, baki, mycon. Ya sbona, nasi, sanda. Emnyango, sete green, tare zanga pambi. Ssbi ni, zanga pambi. Na, ss- ss- tattoo, on your, yes, tumsan, yes. The corner at the end, is no.
Wakana kula la indaweni Ngitandu suguma jeno boonga at the same time ngitandu complain. Eh, when you introduce such an act, siya konona ngoguti, you can't introduce an act just for a few hours. Because okaala safunu wenzwa, amma research. Ni introduce sile iyonkele act, then na faga nama acta velekona, then we need to do a research. We need another day. Si bu yesi zo cheku guti, iyonke iyonke lentebe kulunya la hindes. A a ikuwene similar to the things as well as dealer naso. And I mean dealer naso, what Department of Health. Two, noguti, gule gules kwame so wenzio. Ngogwame if bektiwa u focus on more, ethe ni gubendendo ezoba isn't like peze lo. So lima la wabantu ngap. Department of Health. Singa kchabelela logo because espelena, bali mala ba to gubte tengu bakon. So if the squama be supporting this ganja alo abantu abazu claima, guglima les pelena. Bingso sizo ngono de twainiti siropegiil. Siyaropega if niso stabi niso niso introducea, we acte gange for one day, not even one day, for hours. Siyavuma or anya siyavuma is impagat. Because we are trying our best, uvala ombo pi abashelbe fusesimali. Folorise, ektrine nese fumise ndo ganti, umbo poso fusesimali. Yabonga somana pahwamanch. Tella umsindo, unabiko anything?
Eh, angonge gi bingelele. Ika malame nguo anda kwa rashe ngisbongo. Eh, ngipkamuge wat fourteen kunopa loidu kampsele rengonyen. Gisoba mfo shane nje, kakulu angale nje gi bonge. Kumnyango beso umunde sugume sugutshika eh, uyahambi sana eh nomteto. Gisoo tapuna la paya, us section two A eh, gisotgolisa ge. Kubahlali ku baligene gislu ngulangas nklala phansi gisimpal. Eh, us section two A okunuma ngoguti eh, lepili ye ne HR funded by. Isingi process isowenza, gubelula ke eh, ukunste kisa ukuvige na numa ukunste kisa sugusimali isomnyangos. Sisibenziswa, gen telefane, ngoba kuso fumela eh. Ilentoli kuso fumela i port, ukusigwa zoniku she isama price, a cheap. Owenzu kusimali yomka, lu a minimali kakulme isu hamba indaweni nomiso cover abantu abaningi. So ngano ngela leno ngayi fume ngabesizo slakelela, ukunste kisa sugusismaximiza. Imalia hakulme nengabango sisiya fumela naso, ukusitlizi, ishod. Eh, mtsampe no section nine eh, ozo okunuma. Ngoguti, u esepisha we brought li, ukuti isofantwa eh eh. And it eh, us section three A eh, funded by eh, public fund eh, financial management act. Eh, mtsampe nayo isu ukunste kisa ugyenza in funding even more eh. Independently since airport isowazi gusgen, ilenumwazi zoniku she isela ama price. So umundu u. Fuma umteto, ngayalo sazudozo isbe, ukunste kisa joku si eh, u. Kishyama u imali isowazi masimese tega, so desa abantu bageswe zowazi zola mtsampe usiso. Ulta dugu sita kaguku hulme ngia bong.
Eh, ngibonge kompatistla. Ubonge ngoswa klo, kwa muka eh, guatwe into kumsumbe municipality. Eh, ngilana genke koki kepesila same fundo anutlu shaba. Watch a person eh, no. Uh, ucha person, ucha person we we brought ya same fundo anutlu shaga C H C. Okay, yeah, no, no eh. Partistla logogni ngomundo has been covered, but again mtsambe eh, umundu uyafisa. Oh, ugo suguti with fully support in N H I. Eh, ugu guthina nje ngabahlali, futabahlue mbo. Se fisa engazo ukuti nganon nguti, it has been implemented as of yesterday. Yabong, umundu we fisukchaka slali ukuti. Eh, ikona yini intesengaya nza nje ngabahlali, njoba kwa i implementation date o twenty twenty nine. Ikona yin indo esengaya nza nje ngabahlali. Ukuti mtsambe ikuwazi ukuti ispita pe eh, ishe she ngesimo esisbona yo echale. One law, two eh. Some about eighty five percent wa ballali, basa benzisa ama public service centers. Eh, umundu we fisa ukchaka ukuti. Eh, ngase gubemtsambe abacholi betunjoa behlila. Sebekeba icheka yini is state of readiness uma institution. La wa eh, o o o, jangere pelela seitu eh, ewizona eskebelekzona akul. Gobangi tabangukuti, agiosi za slali. Ukuti sikulu ngome singome senza yonki indo. Ebe niktholaga lukuti, ispelena seitu as equal ready for ukuti si implemente loxelo. But having said that, we are fully behind, we support it, thank you.
Samanbanan, ngosnazi kwa ra apis sibongo eh, ngia imuge lipili. Eh, ngifisa uku understanda, engakzoanga eh, kukulunya u L G P T I. Ukuti uwo na uzo zuzani, njengoba njenga manjessine, nkinga yo keep population. Kakulgazi ngalukulelo society la L G P T I na manya ma keep population, iloko pe la ngia bongakon.
So tella the second round of the hands. Genando? Hmm? Tella esni sangeslandelayo, imaspa kala bangeniboko. Tellisangeslandelayo, genando? Sikona si. Itella si ngaki taseki. Ungati seske dile, umtubengo na ati, ingati ngaparamisi. Ati teleles, ati teleles som somlo, bangen. Ati teleles somlo mo bangen. Ndiateba speli san. Tella unge nemamunkisi.
Ngibonge slalo, ngibingelele kakuluko kuluscho ba ku weslalo, ngibingelela malungo eh. Esha mtsato sa kwa zulnatali leadership ya uku ama departments wonke. Nje nompaga ti, ika malamgo untogo zo mkize, ngishala endaweni asamzumbe what nineteen? Gisabenza win tlanga no esmeli, bizongu tu broadridge health development. Slalo mankale ngisho joku ti eni. Iyonke indo that six to support universal health coverage, we support. Nkala ngispa mssiti siyai siyai support nje eh, N H I. Ngitateke la pakmaklosi zamangan nje ukuti, ugyewa gala kwa kulunya ngoguti. It's alainega kwa section twenty seven no twenty eight of the bill of rights. Ama lungelo atike wonkumundu ne lungelo eh, equality, I K A equality. Ne lsoni pa isidi masa kumundu, wapindu wa tasesela ukuti section twenty eight six two. Eh, show that ngisho isengani sana egana klo xelo. Giya supporta kakulu kama. Kama nshino onkeslalo godama closes la kulumatu seven eight nine. Akaze kwa ukuti in terms of healthcare service package. Kiyo wenzera nje, tinajenga abantu se osuka, ema clinic nomwa goda godela.
Lsoni pane, wakona umtu osho. Pakamisa yo, tella umsindo wetu welle.
Podutu siya kondu ukuti, numa sisigu N H I goda sioka la. Emma clinicis, nomwa otogo tila basakeli, sini wengwa wama levels na getinguseitu. Noguti ika kulu u u close eight, umenchineka kwa ukuti. Is health service will be free at the point of care, mtsampe sonk onke lusakchabulela. Siya ku supporta foot kakulu ukuti, at least as part of ama service benefits. Kiyo bakona ikomi depegelelo, noguti. Guso bakoni contracting of, guso bakoni contracting units at a primary level. Owenzu wenzza show utu zonkis tinguse hamba kwa. Ika kulu sen goda kesa slalo sipam, sela nje singome na noguti. Isowenza impilo zetzi benono, but at the same time they will be transparent, ngoba u u close fifty. Ushilo ukuti, there will be auditing that will be done by the auditor general. And was was kunste kisa us us section fifty one ukuti, we will, there will also be annual reports. I O chair, I O chair eh, parliament na kumini siyai supporta kakulu slalo pambili, thanks.
Sabonga.
Eh, sitalu ngibingelele la ikomi dile zembi lo eh, elpamga wishe mtseto. Spinda spingelele bonge abainwaenge, yale stanga msana mtsanje. Lo okunuma yowe usbong, senwa kaskosa. Okhamga eh, mfundo anutlu shabo, community, community health center. Eh, uslalo wene hau kon. Apinde futabe uslalo wene hau, kutepe enriching. Ngogo glande la umko moslalo. Wefetereishitunde hau okhamga yon, ikosa atu. Nogo glande la ulhelo lobkomanis. Olfume lukuti abantu kumpagati mabalingane, mabetole inziza. Oh, hulume nngoglingana yo. Siyayaseka N H I. Yo ulhelo lbaluleka kakulu, kuthina sizo smisho. Mzo senza ukuti, sibona ukuti ukulume weskatsa na mtsanje. Uyaslegelela nje ngabantu abamnyama. Kanyene sizo sonka spellele, ngale kokbanjulule. Kapaz zukalo okuslalo, sitelas ukuti, eh, N H I. Inalbugeli panzi. Uhlhelo lobutula oso ma business abamnyama. Lulu olpikiswa kakulu ngamalakush. Let rip eh eh eh. Okusho ukuti, asibona ukutukiswa, kwenala sizinda. Ya ma business abamnyama, ukuzebanigeze. Nge mchikuliso eze mbi lo. Ba pinde futu balegelele, inle nyama, ukoshayikati ezigo, siya bong.
Lushaba eh, oh, manje omegui gui gui gui. Esni atelele nse, nse nyanyani bizongu tinosa, oku nyanyani yamanesi eh. Slalo, singo tinosa, ngikuluma ngapanso, go 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 his name national. Nga abanguti nanini azu tinosi yaluamngelano xelikakulka zungoba. Eh, luso tutukisompaga ti, uyito eh, ukaneni ike si fisin kilesi njengalisi. I think we stone is katsima, so kutisamge lukuti hulume wetu. Usenza lukesa ukethela god, ukutsulete, iinzi za ne ngale ngongo. Abantu, esidi ngayo, ayale zetajanga u ibo ukuti siya idinga. Manje siya bongu kutene, lolo xelo luso siza kakulu ngoba. Eh, ikakula zla fekezete, ntsamba ngukumji ngubatakezete. Indao zetu ziti prurala, ngasozukwani antenyesu. Si guti kakulu zenga matkale kakulu, esingizi ngalazina sguazu guy. Lolo xelo spoteso guazu kseza, nabanga kon, nabanga holda, nabanga sebenzi, nabanga holi peshe ni. Angasistpolilist kon, si mtsambe ten miles away, koto kuneklinikeela. Koto ngoba mtsambe i private, ubenga guazu guy yaguni. So sibona ngatikelzo sebenza kakulu, siya bonge kakulu, njoba ufo tese shilo. Veri ngapanso kakusa atu, besi veri tese slawa mgelile eh, siya temba ge manu kuti nompaga tusuyalonda. Illeshi, i i mtseto seke loxay obeki, uwatu lwa geti. Ukwenza gubeluna kuti nompaga tuetu, umpondo kuti, luso sebenza nje, siya bonge kakulu.
Asbonge mtsalam ngapambili, basenke ngabingelele likamu sizo wango. Oh, uspika omka njwoku district. Eh, apinde abinda enye, ye porti la paya escort back, eh, chichay crooks. No, mtsambe umundu we fisukala ngoguti eh, mtsalam ngapambili. Asbonge isetshulo, eni sletsele zona la. Man letsi setshulo la, ngoba umundu me district, baligili ukuti, vesu ukuti district yetu. Okuluma, maspalo kalekwa mtoni. Onama wata nineteen. Eh, ubeso uzemzumbe, onama wata twenty. Uzere rengonyen, ona thirty six, basu ya mzo abantu, ona eleven. And the population yetu, iofia kon nine hundred thousand. So uma opeki district yetu, uzo yitholu mtsambe twenty percent. We indao les ezina abantu, aban oktata entwin, ngengizo oktua baltisa tamba nelgapo. Enla abantu ba alondi kus, siyakchabelela ukuti limitinget na mtsanje ibela, lakshel kon abantu. Labantes kuluma ngaba, abantu abanginame medical aid. Abantu abanga sebenza, abaningbabo. Abantu laba, abalindele ukuti, basi zo hulme ngama grant. Uma ukuti ni na, njenga ma members of parliament. Kakulu one, yafisukusuki i thulo, i nde enye zutunwela, esutulula up to eleven. Simele district siyam sana naso. Isa atso kusam sana naza, gonanjie ukuti because. Kusho inina na ketwa ebona labantu, ukuti nambe nyoba mele, futu sika bela ukti mpide neza genzo ba bus. Any, vesela kuleles kati. Uku sixalutatis kashana, leminyare nyo, ibonile lapaga vesu, desiplisinten so benzins. Enga wangu tukbaligile, enya asuwenda show ukuti. Si isinga gala le, N H I, siyakchabelela logo, bat oku ne eni kweza olapaya. Ali. Umundu pe la, oma lisana analog, ilomundu onomona menga bea go go limli. Eh, onomon, no ngasi inkupego zabantu. Oasiena pe la, ngulme ngami ge manj, gi ne medical aid. Koto ispelena ngisabenza kule salapana sekaya. Actua in fundu lushaba, ngano masinta da na ne kamai. Ngia fisane nogusu ukuti, i experience yam eh, gi na gi ne medical aid. Lolo xelo zobasisa kula bugit. Leza kioza hulme, sisa kula, singono akuluna liso eh, private. Sinestres awazi rambe private, sahamba nalis, it just the population, lolo siso spotiso sisa, sisa kulu. Na le ukuti ge, abantu abazu, kashwa umelanla. Na lumsabenz, yave zola putabantu, abao fundele lumsabenz. We are with board, indele zoke twa ngakona, inda enye folapa. I advise alo, ilo mtsambe city, abantu ba lokwin, isimorake besli indele sense. Yavume la na nobabu kulu meti, if benina indele ukuti swenzepi foli amnyam. Besi ngakchabelela kakulu, ngale ondela su uku, simele uku, siyam sana kakulu, nalulheleni leti, ndesiya bong.
Iya bingelele kwalonishwa, bonge ban nga pamwaitu. Ngilele abase benzi, kakulka zbezimpila, bapagati wetu na mtsanje, nabapati. Be ipedelela seitu nama clinic, ngibingelele umpaga ti wonke, ki umama okanya se. Eh, omele ama koskasi eh, professional level. Eh, gi funa nje ukusho ukuti, besi velese, sivengeve sili ndile. Il, sili nde kakulu ukuti, ai she she iopasiso parliamente umongameli, besi iya kaliya sebenza. Ngoba, tinajesa ngabe sifazane, sibulawa ikenza ika kulka zyesi inya. Usugnosu uku, usalindiwe kutwa. Itetia ko igute, ngobi ipedelela bezinane, esguazu ukuti, ziskokele. Ugule gule 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 kenza espatai, uba ulusa ikazu sunosu. Manje sesi azu ukuti, ngegu salinda inkosi alpeti for months. So uzo fsheshu nje eduze, espelena seduze. Siya bonge kakulu logo, futige asisabi, ngoba. Kuno mtseto lo osho transparency, ukuti, aguko xogwenzeka ngasese. Kusukuti getina, uma kukone sikbona yo ukuti, agohambi ngelgelela. Kulula ukuti sisheshi, sisebenzise umteto, ukuse logo ogwenzegayo, ngandeke. Sibonge futi ukuti. Abantu anabetu. Kakulka zla aba, abas, abanumshopi, ukuti bapatimizi, beban ngani. Lomteto uzo bapegele, ngoba. Begunzi ma, kuleziz ngane, ika kulka zin goba zbezibé ama victims eh rape. Begunzi ma kakulu kzona, ngoba. Indela beinde, beiba inde kakulu kuzebatune peto lumsizo. Siyetemba ukuti, imteto le N H I eh, isobarant. Manje ge engitela yo, ge mine ngitelu ukuti. Siti ukufundi sage abapati bezimpilo, normala ba baspati le zembi, ilema clinic aid. Ukuti isimo manje seso shich, ngage ngusaba eh, business as usual. Ngobukulme luso besi kokil. Mine nje, umundu we medical aid, ngasgale ukuti, ngabo september sikesa ipelele medical aid. Endangti indwa ama private, utufiga nje batina vina 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 kutwa, lack of funds. Nomayo funds are finished, sec final ku tangiela paya. Eh, clinic, puti simbongo hulume ngaloko. Ngobuba mtsambe ngempela, kwa kwa wenu ne medical aid asaktati, shuti besi zofaveli. Si bonge nalala ma expenses angaga, ebesi ngena goona. Kutwa umundu unde kenza, kipeli medical aid. Uzuta ise gonko gunye onago, uzama, ektrine ngo tumutahame, anishie nka sahlana la ntlala kon. Siya bonge kakulu ukuti, konke lukumanje, se kuzoba izolo, sithobeke kala. Kunengeke besi ngakusho, kota nje, siyama koskasi, siya yamugela, N H I, ngia bong.
Tella nje be bonge ma kwajelisa. Na liyituba, la lelele ma legal advisors etu, indo tumwangene apfumle, apfuna ngogwama closes that needs clarity. Indo kufana bago wenzwa njana ngabo, wenzu ndokutu njenga ngoba, kwa zingotukupenduleke, hapo banemi buzoo. Noguti kuzo wambaganja, obuva tiumgoni.
Ngibonge slalo eh, ngibonge kuninano ngi. Njoba nisapota nje, lomteto subivi nyasulethile siya bonge kakulu. Eh, uputi opeki tenza, u u buze ngalenda bago ukuti irisachienzi we ini. Kabantu analaba, esui ah, oka abantu. Ogo ingane zabantu bangapanso ukuti, uzo wenzza kwa mtsambo ukuti ingane. Yala eh, South Africa ngawa zukcholo sizo ngogu zembi lo, ngenga ukuti eh, says prioritize eh. Ndjoba esen kazi lukuti, umteto sseke lo wetu eh, i constitution yala eh, South Africa, us section twenty eight. Uxogalo ukuti, every child, ine lungelo lo ukuti, itole usizo lo zembi lo so. Asigwazu ukuti sitwa se go ukuti, loona agazalwa, abaza libala ezwe, ukuti atole usizo. By the mere fact ukuti lo umundu ingane eh eh. Wongu uzo wazukutatole usizo, go go zembi lo, ngenga ukuti. Une lungelo ezingeane ukuti atole eh, 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 healthcare eh. Ebesi watinda nenndaba ukuti eh, indaba yama ambulances ukuti, lava abal. Aba sebenza won, abakazu ukuti baktalpe shwe, opega ama ama patients. Eh, indo umpago lo, ngiatabanguti imnyango yo, uyombili national no province. Bakona eh, njoba ngshilo ukuti, ama provinces za umteto ya shukuti, imapa ma responsibilities abo. Ebesi na nationally, imapa ma responsibilities abo, ogunye gabo indaba eh, human resources. Oko shewa kwa labo basebenzi. So ngia tabanguti, bazule na abo indo eh eh eh, kon, emteto ne funele vele yenze. Eh, usisi, o o, usisu utudu zile ukwala, ukulme ngendaba yama lokuzane, yama ambulances. Ukuti makane, ishoteyja ukuti, kuzo kwenze kwa nje. Obukona nje, uzo pe la zongele zozinto ukuti, inzi za. Zo 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 sebenza i i indaba yo, u u empilo zabantu, uzo ka ngane ka ngane kuzobe. Ku provide duwa, wongama resources afanele eh, infrastructure kanjala kanjalo. Namap ambulances ezingizindo, ezizo pegelelo ukuti, zia provide duwa ngoba. Njenga majessiasu ukuti konala wa ah, private, ebesi uba konna. Lawa ah, umpaga ti ama lawa ase ipele, aga department of health. So na abo lava abapprivate, baso besi be register nje ngapanso wa lomteto ukuti. Naboba ama service providers, so wongu umundu tinga usizo le ambulance. Angage sa kwa swa ukuti, loona uprived, lo public. Mama beku ambulance nje, iacrediti hewe ukuti isobe isebenza. Ngapanso lo xelo lo N H I, lo ambulance zowazu ukuti ise ikichime, inikezusu. Agusho ge ukuti, i departmenti isokoza na ukuti itole inzizo, lo koko kuzo kwenzeka. Eh, nemali funele ibekon ukuti, lezi ndelo zon, onke zahame kwa nje ngapanso umteto. Kota wongama ambulances azobe, esebenzisa esebenzisa lolhelo fo wonge umundu kon. Eh, ebesi usisi usi ndeni eh. Eh, osisi tatile iskalo soguti, umteto subivi nyalosu lete. Oh, ama ama awazambalwa, askwa zangu ukuti sishale. Nabantu batoli tuba lukuti baiza i irisachi abo babu ye. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. Up till September. I have to pay for my car. 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 Compensation. I have to pay for my car. 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 Department. Page 17. Number seven. I have to pay for my car. 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 So I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. So I have to pay for my car. 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 Implementation. I have to pay for my car. Masboga. Close 59. I have to pay for my car. 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 59-1. Act will take effect on a date that is going to be fixed by president proclamation. And then we see close 57. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. So I have to pay for my car. 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 Phase two, as an example. It is achieved from 2006 onwards. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. 2026. Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. Your rights, your health care. I have to pay for my car. With available resources. I have to pay for my car. So I have to pay for my car. 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 Irrespective of gender or orientation. So I have to register as my users. I have to pay for my car. Leo sector. I have to register. So I have to pay for my car. 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 Close 39. I have to pay for my car. So I have to encourage my service providers. Including. I have to register. And NHSI. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. NHSI. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. Yeah. I have to pay for my car. 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 Thank you.
I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. Tell us. I have to pay for my car. 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 PPP officers suffering from the municipal as well as institutions. I have to pay for my car. It's related to public participation officers as a corner. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. Amazon. Indira. Amazon. I get. I smell. I have to pay for my car. So that's why I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. Because I have to pay for my car. 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 So I have to pay for my car. As much as I know, which you have done. I know there has been a problem. Sense of. Clever. I have to pay for my car. Immobilization is obviously wrong versus our officers that are there. That are supposed to be assisting the situation. Thank you so much. At least I do have your number. My body. This is my car. I have to pay for my car. I have to pay for my car. I have to go back from 1994. I have to go back to 1999. There is a South African health review that has been done. And so I have to go back. If I have to go back. I have to go back from 1994 to 1999. I have to go back from 1993. I have to pay for my car. 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 I have to go back. I have to go back. I have to go back. 2020. The first case. Covid 19. SNO Castin. Younger. I have to go back. 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 What was the first case? If you get a private institution. Unfortunately. I have to go back. Public, not private. I have to go back. I have to go back. City. The market. I have to go back. 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 I have to pay for oxygen. I have to go back. Where do hospitals get oxygen? Market. I have to go back. 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 The Office of the Health Standards Compliance. You have to go back. I have to go back. I have to go back. Public sector institutions. Then I have to go back. It is an independent body like a board that is so independent. I have to go back. I have to go back. I have to go back. It is an independent body. Everyone says crisis. It's all wrong. I have to go back. 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 Infrastructure. I have to pay for my car. Society. I have to go back. The grant that has been injected by the government. It has made the hospital to look like a hospital. It has got a face. And it is a one. It was not there, but it is there. It is part of the NHSI. So I have to go back. I have to go back. But it seems. We've got pharmacies. Young. I have to pay for human resource. The equipment. It needs to be protected. We do have some securities. So I want us to look at it positively. I have to go back. 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 The clinic. I have to go back. As a community center. I have to go back. I have to go back. As a community health center because. I have to go back. The clinic. The clinic. Yes. 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 They have to go back. So I have to go back. According to expertise. The hospitals. And them. So. And that's. I have to go back. I am Tina. Does it provide what is supposed to be providing? Those are the things. It's always wrong. Currently. Is that? Oh, SSC. I have to go back. So I have to go back. So I have to go back. I have to go back. I have to pay for my car. City. I have to go back. 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 Governments. That means the hospital boards that are there. By your car. I have to pay for my car. I have to go back. 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 Infrastructure towards implementation of the NHSI. So on this. On the 16th and the 17th. This is our Puma. Irrespective of. Committee. All the members. The legislature. This is our Puma to different districts. It's all wrong. I have to go back. 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 Since the police. I have to go back. I have to go back. The clinic. I have to go back. Is it talking to standard? The norms and standards. As you can tell about the infrastructure. Do you have the norms and standards as well as the equipment is concerned? Young. I have to go back. I have to go back. I have to go back. In the line of the emergency ward. I have to go back. I have to go back. And this is what I think. Because it do. Okay. And this is what I think. And give money now. Other year, the user friendly passing. If you think. I have to go back. Those are the situations. I will call. I have to go back. 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 Then I have to go back. I have to go back. In your next. It's not. Standard. I have to go back. 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 Assist versus woozer is missing. And we know how to deal with our situations where things are not there. And yet. I have to get. The financial cycle. It budget. It passes. Thomas. The best. I have to. The political head. He's a wins and don. And then. I have to go back. The annual performance plan. I have to go back. Based on that annual performance plan. I have to go back. On policy. On the policy. I have to talk to the need. As I can before. I have to go back. No, but it's just what they said in copy and paste. Because that is a problem we do have when it comes to the officials. They come with copy and paste. I have to analyze. And raise the star. I have to. Then we. I have to go back. Since the annual oversight plan. It's a withdrawal. It's based on what has been submitted by the department. And we only draw out all those things. And then it's. But it's. So no sense. It shows. No, but it's. I have a budget. Now I say. I have a budget. It's my. Because I fail. We utilize. We have failed. I have to. You don't consult. I have to. About the beneficiaries. Then. You have to go back. I have to pay for the DHP. It is. So many. It's a clinic. I have to. The clinic. I have to. 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 These structures that are supposed to be doing that. So I don't want to go further. I have to. I understand. I have to. The government. It took time. I have to. I have to. I have to. I have to. Young. I have to. I have to. I have to. I have to. That is what we are calling. It is a health system. It's all right. It's young. It's your. I have to understand. Hence that review. It called again. 2022 review. And we post the COVID. I have to clear. I have to. As now as the public. It's me. I have to. As now. And it's. The resources. The resources that are there. If now we are going to form inwa eyo twa ye mali. That means njenga ngokugu. Whatever ekona every private sector. Is a is a baby tijani swanda woni. Nanjoni nepre public sector. But kusaba kuno mteto in doing that. Agusufele kutezela wyo woloa. Ngapaga kweleka. There are funds that are being given the private sector by the government. Long mani njenga ngokugu. Yona malefune gakes indoguti. It's going to be ete lessa. Is is all tijani swanda woni. And ifunindoba ngitigenge ngoku. Nisa uwa up. You are distracting abantu bam members. Goba basisela nina funan veleni wake. Goba nyaitu dulele tafi. Dizama ogutakisa lelelelelelendu eti. Menga beko ndio oguti. Eh asiboni lindusenseka ngokushobespati kanga halo imaklinik. Ta ubona ismosa se clinic usibona indoguti. Nesbekele setu bo indoguti. Our public sector ayanzi indo. Yayi. Tina, we don't give i hospitality. Hospitality. Utundo shao fagwe awotino figawa fagwa iwo beke by TV. Utunndoba that is on. Kata ujenganga ngokugu uzoo uzoo. Obanga ba usavotino. We as we not iwo diemba ibena abantu abanga pina manesa meba meba ngapina. Si isbonile iskanego success as a covid is wenza. Suakeng amanes eamba. Esenza ikado of honor bebe shlebenza bonke. Abanjenga ngokusbea puwa beba beba nisemotwa. It is so painful. Funega niya zke ngondogut. Kukasment ogupinda wakona. Amwa ne elokebe. Aliyondo elula ngoba kusmeo tijenga nganjoni mal. Ilenda sibona indoguti. Ungani sibela oguti fight abantu abanyi. Aba benefita kui abap benefita we health. Ute bena tiban. Indonlaybankel ndoti njenga ngobe koba njaba private. Makube kon abantu abap public. Inaba rofna si understand the land. Anfunu. Kubera kon. Anfunu kubera kon. Sasa kuakalispatunge. And ifunu umto asa uhamba ngoku. Ayolungisakunndopi oluncelela as members. Koshwa because kusaslinge lasangene eketeen. You want to see them classes ngapaga. The reports esina so. Sesi na viroport classiyama institutions. It's because we did have ama priest visit. So siya konangosyo landele indoguti. Ngenbele ngbele ngujalon na. And then si dipoteja kubistina. What have you done about that? Itela ogu banjenga ngoku. Unbesen nigezela. Zenza ituba lo oguti. Itela umshenano wamebe ngowa. Send ya ovala senda nkulun. Itela ukutuba lo banjenga ngoku. Ubulaleka kulu. Ga yonke umtoso nigeze. Kasilo bazoba konakle meeting. Sena artist ngabane swafumanama kasha pati asinali trash. Asinalo itrasasibambala. Singala ma members wa le komite. Niasbon ndotisbasisidessa. Sibambala asinjen. And when it comes to health. God was ya bulela ngobani ngababa. Si quasile ogushere shadi. Little snokasushere shakuni. Njenga ngokusesi city. Abo abasangena. Gokuma na paya. Sitala indoguti babeba no ungena. Bakwasababa tumele. Until the fifth of September. As it has been laid down there on onatsiga on the board. Indoguti itunye ra kubani na. Number two, I would like to invite you oguti. Njenga ngoku siaya zba kutela nila. Siya sakunaga dokma. Babekona kuya oguprovitey. Njenga ngoku iya uzosuka indoguti. Yaya zindoguti eh. Oguzesi nseka ogus. Si suga apanga pambi. Akriteta afen baba akriti efestile. Umdufuma nokyagwa kumdufuma nokyagwa. Is it idiosapi ekribele. Baso sugabokala ba kritifestile. Mbakati kujakritifestile na kati kujana. Sitala indoguti. Ungabi ko umtoso timna anfuma na ngakuja. Ta be dizo bizwa. Nkomi tilesenpi lo. Liso sasisanga landi. Njatis ya bulela ngakulu. Njati ningamba kaku shle. Upindele makati.